Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting Wednesday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, eight thirty a.m. This time, we'll ask for the invocation by Dr. Capers, a pastor with Rogers Community United Methodist Church. Welcome. Please stand.
Good morning.
As we pause for this time of invocation, we're reminded that Lent is a time in the Christian church calendar for repentance. And when we think about repentance, we don't have to think about something that's really bad that we need to try to turn away from all the time. But sometimes, we may be headed down a path slightly off track, and we recognize the need to change direction, and then we take the appropriate measures to turn away from the wrong course towards a corrected course. March is also Women's History Month, and in the words of Mother Teresa, "We remember that not all of us can do great things, but we can all do small things with great love." Our scripture focus as we move into our time of prayer is Psalm one thirty-nine. "Oh, Lord, you have examined my heart, and you know everything about me. You know when I sit down and when I stand up. You know my thoughts even when I am far away. You see me when I travel, and you know everything I do. You know that what I am going to say even before I say it." And twenty-three and twenty-four says, "Search me, O God, and know my heart; test me and know my anxious thoughts; point out anything in me that offends you, and lead me along the path of everlasting life." Let us pray. God, we come to you this morning as we gather for the meeting of the Bradenton City Council. We come celebrating a continued commitment and dedication to a worthy and noble mission. That mission entails, as is stated, that you are committed to continued enhancement of the quality of life and the excellence of service for the entire community. So as we pause this morning, we call upon God, a God who is mighty, a God who is miraculous, a God who is majestic, mysterious, as well as magnificent. We ask you, God, this morning, to give these your elected servants, give them your wisdom, as often we struggle with difficult decisions, and they may strive to show sensitivity and fairness to the entire Bradenton community. God, this morning, as we pray, we lift up this council and these persons of elected who've been elected to serve. God of hope, we pray, and we call upon you to bring this diverse group of gifts, of experience, and knowledge together, that they may be used in a manner of excellence, that they may be used in expediency, that they may be used in effectiveness. This is our fervent prayer. In the name of Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge as our pastor and our councilwomen lead us this month of Women's Month. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. We'll call the meeting to order. Mrs. Melton?
We do not have any proclamations, but there is a presentation from the fire department.
Okay, if we can ask Chief to come forward.
Thank you for the opportunity, Tim Geer, Fire Chief, City of Bradenton. We're trying to get back into the, I guess you could say, habit of recognizing our personnel, especially when they do great things and they promote up through the ranks. And we've got a handful of personnel and their families here today to recognize, and I appreciate the opportunity. So we'll get started, and I'll ask Assistant Chief Candidate to come on up. Chief Candidate's been with the city for about seventeen years, and he actually snuck in right behind my promotion and wasn't recognized officially and, you know, was trying to dodge a bullet there. But, you know, he's currently, he's come so far in his career. I worked with him as a lieutenant and then captain shortly, and he's moved on up through battalion, done a lot of good things, displayed great leadership, and I really can't say enough positive things about him. And he's really is the future of this department and along with others, but he's currently working towards his master's degree, I believe, in public safety or maybe business administration, but very educated, very educated already, education-focused, and just a great role model for all of us. So Brian, I appreciate you. Here's your badge, and thank you so much for coming. Looking forward to it. We'll ask for one group, at least one group photo with y'all, okay, when we're done, so. And let's go in order there. Go with Eddie first. All right, our next person I'd like to recognize is Captain, formerly Captain Eddie Corcino. Eddie's been with the city for about twenty-seven years. He's working on his twenty-seventh year, if you can believe that. So he's been promoted to Division Chief, and, you know, we really appreciate his time, and if you could share that badge, we're running short on badges today. It's really quite interesting, the situation we're in. All badges are backordered for like six months. But anyways, you know, we're doing the best we can. And, but going back to Captain Corcino, you know, he and I spoke on a daily basis for about two years during COVID, and when I say morning, noon, and night, it was nonstop. And so I commend him for his good job, excellent work to guide us through the COVID situation, not only with personnel, but also with citizens and responding on calls, and a lot of that was totally new for us, and really monitoring the PPE we had to wear. So good things in the training division. He's still going to maintain that charge, and, you know, with promotion comes more assignments as well, so I appreciate his willingness to continue the charge, even having twenty-seven years on the job. So thanks a lot. So some of these folks, well, they've already received their badge, like Battalion Chief Reynolds, I'll ask him to come up next. Jimmy Reynolds has been with the city actually about twenty-one years. He took a brief stint and went to Longboat Key for about five, where he used his paramedic skills and got some time on the streets out there, and, but, once again, Jimmy is very dedicated, has served on many of our committees. There's really nothing that has gone on in the department that he hasn't touched, whether through policy or vehicles, stations, you name it. He's a go-to guy, and I just can't say enough good things about him. You know, working on his education, great family guy. He's also, and I'll bring this up, he may not want me to say, but he's related to Captain Thiers, and I think he's here.
Resemblances.
Yep, so they don't like to admit it, but they are related and part of a good, great family. So Jimmy went from lieutenant to battalion chief, and, which is a big step, and it's kind of out of the norm, but I was very honored to promote him to that position. So congratulations. All right, I'll ask Lionel Harrison to come up. And once again, Lionel's already been, I'll say promoted back of the department, but I wanted to recognize him today. Through competitive testing, our lieutenants go through many hours of classes and study, and Lionel came out on top during this promotional process. So, you know, like many of us have already gone through with every step, you know, there's just so much work that we have to put in. Lionel is another one of those guys that, he's a hard worker, he's got his hands on everything. He was willing to take over leadership of our technical rescue team, which is a serious undertaking, and I commend him for that. He's shown great leadership. He's already been on deployments and represented the city well, and I just can't say enough positive about where he's going to go in the future, and I hope that he maintains his motivation and great leadership skills, and we're very proud of him, so congratulations. I'll ask Chris Melzer to come up next. Chris has been one of our inspectors for approximately five, six years now, and done a great job working with contractors in the community, has been very involved with the hotels around. We've gotten a lot of praise back from members in the community and contractors. So, you know, when we looked at him for the deputy fire marshal position, it was kind of a layup, so part of this is a transition need to take over for the fire marshal when he retires. So we're hopeful that they'll work together and we'll be ready and have business ready for when the fire marshal retires. But you'll be seeing Chris around, and he'll be involved with all the building construction that goes on in the city. So my pleasure to promote you. I've got one more. Brian Piazza, if you will come up. Didn't want to leave him out, and then we'll get a big group picture. Brian's been with the city for approximately seventeen years. Is that about right, Brian? More like twenty? Fifteen? Okay, I knew I was close. But Brian was promoted to Charge EMT recently. That job is one that is really, whenever I say you're doing all the work on the street, getting beat up, really providing patient care, I've never seen anybody that provides such great patient care under pressure, and we really encourage Brian to go after this position, and we thank him for going through the testing process and coming out on top. Great firefighter, great skill level, and we look forward to him being out on the street, you know, representing the fire department and assisting our citizens directly. So thank you, Brian.
So if we want, why don't we have the council go around? We'll get the big group picture there and then let their families come up and get pictures with them? Thank you.
Family number? Come on, this is history here. One chance. Appreciate that.
Thank you for being here, and thanks for doing that, Chief. Let them have a moment to get out because they have to go fight the fires.
But, Mr. Mayor, let's make sure that the families know how much we appreciate them sharing their family members with us in a very difficult job.
All right, moving along, we'll move on to citizen comment. Citizen comments will be accepted at this time on any non-agenda item. Comments will be accepted at the public hearings and agenda items at the appropriate time, and under normal non-agenda items. The first person is Barbara Thompson. Please come forward, state your name, and you will have three minutes and your address, please. Name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Barbara Thompson. I currently live in the Bradenton Housing Authority, SUG. I've been there for eleven years. I am leaving at the end of this month because I can't stand it another minute with Mitchell being in charge.
Come on, God.
Please, ma'am, we'll have decorum, or we'll ask you to leave.
I have had a flooded kitchen for three weeks, and I can't get any help. And Mayor, I sent you an email and asked for your assistance. I've asked just everybody I could think of, and finally, the codes people have finally come out, but they told me if he has thirty days and knowing him, he'll wait till he goes to court. I have, as I said, I've been there for eleven years. The most recent, before the flood, I had a door lock replaced. He came around, replaced all the door locks. The first time I used it, my key got stuck. They came and they pulled the key out and they said, "Okay, it sticks." The next time I used it, which was about four months later, we're talking about my back door, the key got stuck again. So, you know, he charged me for a hundred and forty-three dollars to replace the key because, I mean, replace the lock because they weren't, it wasn't installed correctly. The only, when I came there, the people that were the managers before, and they were crooks, obviously, they went to jail. But let me tell you, it ran like a well-greased oil machine. We had a good maintenance people, we had good people in the office. The gentleman that he calls his maintenance man now can't even install a door lock. All he does is follow Mitchell around and pick up trash. In September, I overheard three, two conversations when I happened to be in the office paying my rent. The first one, a lady called in, she had moved in July. She was looking for her refund check of her deposit. His cohort in the office told her, "We're not writing checks this month." This is the third of September, and the lady moved out in July. Then there was another lady in the office with me who had made a payment in July that wasn't credited to her account yet, and they told her, "Well, you'll have to prove you made it." She says, "Well, not a problem. I have all my receipts right here." And they tried to argue with her that she hadn't made the payment. This goes on. He treats everyone there like he's the master of the plantation and we're the slaves. It's ridiculous. We may not be the ones that are filling everybody's pockets with donations, but we do, we are human beings and we're reasonable people. I worked hard all my life, and because somebody stole my business from me, I ended up there. But I didn't always depend on the government. I've worked hard, and I resent being treated this way, and I resent having to live this way because somebody doesn't know what he's doing. For the flood, you know what he told me it was? It was my Tatts water bowl that put an inch and a half of water across my kitchen floor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Diane Weldon. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Diane Weldon. I live at twelve-twelve Second Avenue East in Bradenton, and I'm here today to discuss issues that we have in the Old Manatee neighborhood. All of you have received emails from me. Some of you, I miss Barnaby, have no reason to, but I try to copy everyone so that they're up on what's going on. I'd like to know if it is the intent of the city council to install sidewalks on the south side of Second Avenue East and Twelfth Street East. I've not received any information regarding that, but that's what the neighbors have heard, that that's what intends to be done. That would take out some pretty mature trees in that area, and we're definitely not looking forward to that if that is the case. Also, I understand that the city council intends to allow live music at what used to be the Mineral Springs Park. There's no parking there for that kind of activity, and we'd like to know if that's the intent of the city council.
All right, if you want to get with Mr. McCollum, he can walk out and tell you about the, I know I had forwarded the email to him that you had sent, and I don't know if he got anything back to you yet, but it was coming back of some of the things, but check with him, he can tell you about the little logistics, and then at the end of all citizen comment, we will make answers to some of the questions.
Okay, fine. Also, we have asked for no parking signs on the south side of Second Avenue East.
Mr. McCollum can go over all of that, all the emails that Jacob and you have sent, where Mr. McCollum can go over with you.
All right, we'd really like that done. I understand that the lighting at Mineral Springs Park is to prevent vandalism and that sort of thing. We have issues with the lighting in the park in that the first house next to the park at thirteen oh-two Second Avenue East will have to modify their window coverings because the light intrusion is so great. Also, it's just obnoxious. It's way too bright, and I'd like to know if anybody has gone and measured the light output in lumens from that. Again, him, okay? Yesterday, it appears that the grinding noise from the compactor at the Shoreview Apartment Complex has not been as grinding as it normally is, so we do appreciate whatever was done. But I also have a question regarding Shoreview Apartments. I understand they were recently sold, and I'd like to know if they're ever going to be cited for code violations. They were not cited under the previous ownership, and they're not being cited now. Is there a reason why that's not being done?
That would be our planning director right there also. She's got all those answers.
All right, that's it for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving forward to Wiley Green, the third. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes for the record.
Wiley Green, twenty fifteen, twenty fifth Avenue West. I would like to address an ongoing issue about some surplus property at.
Mr. Green, could you speak up just a little bit?
Sure. I'd like to address council and the mayor about some surplus land. Mr. McCollum may be able to get back in time to address that. Mr. Perry, he's aware, and some of the council people. But we are trying to purchase the land, and it's been ongoing for years and years, and we are just trying to make sure council can finally get it on the agenda. We know everything is going up, surveys were supposed to be done and other things. I've talked to councilperson, coachman, and Mr. Perry, and we're just trying to get things done before it gets out of control where we can afford to purchase the land. We know there's some logistics involved, but, I mean, we're just hoping the council will move better. I thought with these three young ladies, councilpersons now, that we will get things done a lot more. I know men are the head, but you ladies are the ones that turn the head, because you're the neck. So I'm hoping that you'll be able to help me out, and we'll get this resolved. I don't like coming up here, but I know sometime Jim and Mr. Perry will be busy, but they can only do what you allow them to do, and I'm hoping that you'll find grace and mercy upon us and let us have this. It's been something that we've been trying to do for twenty years. We approached council probably ten years ago, and then there was some problems then, and the last couple of years, I've been coming off and on trying to get a true answer, and hopefully, I can get back with the pastor and the church members to let them know that, hey, the city of Bradenton is finally smiling, and it is the friendly city.
Thank you. All right, next up will be Siobanda Griffin. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Siobanda Griffin, Pam, out of Florida. Bless morning. So I just wanted to come up and speak in regards to last time I spoke, and I was addressed after I had spoke. So I know that it was stated that nothing could be done about Mr. Ellis because it's a private area that he's overseeing, but I wanted to know who appointed him? And then I also wanted to ask the question as to who does appoint the commissioner, a resident commissioner for the Bradenton Housing Authority, Mr. Kraft? Because I did look up some information in regards to him and then his background, and I don't know if the person that did appoint him as the resident of the commissioner for Bradenton Housing Authority had actually looked up his background before he was brought down here, where it states that he had, you know, basically put out that he was going to blow up a school, a school full of children and that he was a child pedophile. So with all the pictures and stuff that's being taken of these children that's in this community, I just wanted to make sure that we were addressing the situation because I totally agree with this young lady that spoke this morning in regards to anything being done. I also wanted to, because maybe I'm just confused about some things, but I just wanted to find out who does vote the commissioners in office, and then who votes for the mayor? So as the people of the city of Bradenton, I just wanted to address that this morning. I know that these are being recorded and it's being seen, so I want people to know that they do have a voice, and their votes count. So the way that we make a difference is by coming out and we vote, and we get out there, and we let it be known in our community as to what is being done and how it's being done, because just like this young lady said this morning, these people have a right not to be treated like slaves, not to be treated like prisoners, or to be treated as if they're out on parole. So if people that are appointed to be in position aren't doing anything, then the residents have to take a stand to do something about it.
Good.
Okay?
Thank you, and we will, at the end of all citizen comment, there will be comments made from the council.
Okay, so you'll wait till I sit down again? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Rodney Jones. Please come forward. You have, state your name and address, and you have three minutes for the record.
Rodney Jones, two thirteen Sixteenth Avenue West. Continue to comment. I concur with Ms. Griffin on the problems that the housing authority are perverse. We've got a problem with the police department that's even bigger because Melanie can't seem to discern between what needs to get investigated and what doesn't. I think I've heard Patrick Roth and Bill Sanders both say that those sound like criminal complaints that those girls are complaining about, and nothing's being done. And then she says, "No, they're civil matters," and I don't agree with that at all. I don't think anybody else agrees, but Melanie picks and chooses. Now, Jean, while you've avoided talking to me and even lying to keep me from speaking Now, Jean, while you've avoided talking to me and even lying to keep me from speaking up here, which everyone witnessed, you haven't returned one of my emails, but you guys say that you want the community to work with government. You really don't. I just saw a, something with Vern Buchanan and Melanie on there, and she's whining and then complaining about how bad conditions are and how all these cops are getting killed all over the country. Well, guess what? We're getting killed too. We're getting killed by cops all over the country. You guys are seeing it, and it's the relationships that those police departments have in those black communities and these poor communities where these things are happening. We just had Joseph Shaw come down here last week, and since they, Bradenton Police Department pulled a gun on him in his own yard. There has been no follow-up. Jean, I've been trying to meet with you since December. You won't meet with me. You keep telling me to bring new information up here. I obliged you. I brought a whole person with me that you hadn't talked to. You haven't, you say you called me once. I'm telling you, I don't see well. I could easily miss a call. Would you please communicate me? If you're not going to meet with me, tell me the next step to go. You asked for the new information. I bring you the new information. You don't speak with me. In the interim, while you don't speak with me, Melanie goes and does a whole nother investigation, not understanding that this is a continuation of my original complaint that they want to investigate because they're guilty in it, so they just keep stepping around it. So she does a whole nother inquiry based on the fact that I've been hearing about my complaints in the meeting, but my complaint's about the same thing. So, Jean, what you allowed to happen is the same three people that were accused of misconduct, you allow those same three people to, you do an investigation and come back with no findings. What do they do that at? That's about crazy. There's no stewardship, and there's no leadership on your behalf. You ought to be ashamed of yourself, man. You're incompetent. You know, you let those people do that, and then you stake your reputation on that saying that they, and you won't communicate. I got four people that want to meet with you. We're begging to meet with you, Mayor. Is that what you want to hear? You want to hear the black man say, "Oh, we beg you, Mr. White Man"? Well, we want to meet with you, brother, because we've got evidence to present to you, and you should, you be, I'm not saying you are, but you're behaving like a coward. You really are. You're behaving like a coward and an incompetent, that you don't see the need with everything that's going on in this community and all the stuff that's going on with law enforcement. You don't see a need to communicate with this community, and it's not just me. You just had another man come up there and say, "Pulled a gun on him." Come on, man, show some leadership. You look like a coward up there.
Thank you. At this time, I have no other cards for citizen comment, so one of the things that I would like to address here is obviously, it's been talked about, the young lady and the other lady that came up, Ms. Griffin, that came up and talked about Bradenton Housing Authority. And I mean, Mr. Sanders is our representative from the council on that authority, and we've said many times that when things come into us, we forward them, as you know, and get them to the proper department. We only appoint the board, and I've only been here a year, and I've only appointed two people so far, and it's the two new people. And there is some other things I've asked our lawyer to look into, an option of getting a, that board has five members now, possibly can have seven, so this council can appoint new board members to hopefully hold, the board will hold the administrator accountable, you know, and then do their investigations. We can't hire or fire him. It's a HUD situation. Mr. Rudicell, I mean, you can help me on that any legally wise?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to note at the outset, in case there's confusion out there, the Bradenton Housing Authority is a completely independent entity from the city of Bradenton. So the only relationship between the two is that this council appoints the members of the housing authority. But otherwise, it operates totally independently of this organization.
And I know that, you know, once the board members come and apply, then we appoint them, and the council confirms it. So we're trying to get some board members that will step up, and I believe they have. The two that we've appointed recently, as Mr. Sanders has said, have started to hold things accountable. And obviously, that's where you need to go and talk to their board, and they, I believe, if I'm not incorrect, Mr. Rudicell, that board hires and fires that executive director.
Yes, that's my understanding.
That board is the ones that needs to be held accountable for it because they can make the decisions on what happens to their staff and the executive director part. And again, I think that, since I've been here, the two board members that we've appointed as a council are really starting to hold things, and I've seen a little bit of a difference in attitude, so, Mr. Sanders?
I'll speak to that if you...
Yes, Mr. Sanders?
Yes. We have two good board members, and I ask that you address your complaints in person at those meetings, and they will allow you in. I've been to every one for the last year and a half, and I haven't seen any citizens show up. So please show up and address your concerns to them, because we can't do anything about it, but they can, and they've promised to me that they're going to be more active on these complaints. So if you speak to them, they're going to investigate what the situation is. I don't know who appoints, somebody answer, maybe the mayor can help on that. Who appoints the citizen or the...
We do also.
We do all that also?
Yes.
So we're responsible for that, and we look at each, each board member as they come up, or if there's any infractions. So I am pleased that they're going to address these concerns if you will present that to them. I have, I've been there a year and a half, and I haven't seen one person show up at that board meeting to, as a citizen, to complain or, and I'm waiting for that to happen because that's the only way you'll get more people other than the executive director to be involved. So I'm, that's published out there. I'm not sure when the next meeting is. I believe it's in eight...
March 17.
March 17?
The last one was canceled, but we were there.
No, it was not canceled.
Yes, it was.
Well, I was there, and we had one just last week, a retreat, which could have had some people, but I was there for four hours, almost four hours.
And you don't know about it?
Well, I don't know. I haven't checked their website, but if there's one March 17, please show up. I will certainly be there. The board's there. I can't speak. I don't have any authority there. I'm just a representative that listens, that, so, but that board, they said they were going to have a clock. They're going to give you just three or three minutes, and they want you to come in, and the board says that they will address those issues timely. So if they don't, then we'll have to discuss how the board is operating and maybe appoint some new members. But I, I'm very serious. There's, there's at least three or four members. I think there's five on there now, five, and I think they're going to listen to you. I swear. I honestly believe that in my heart, that they're going to listen to you, and I'm out there, I'm going to make sure that everything I can do to help will do this. So you could be right. I don't know. I, you know, I'm not taking sides on this because I hear they have a report at every meeting of all the complaints. Now, maybe they're not putting in the complaints. I don't know, and I don't have the authority to go in and look at that. But if you come in and you tell us, just like you did today, tell this board that, they will act on it. And if you see that the board's not acting on it, then you can come back here and say, "Well, it looks like we need some new board members." That's the only thing we can do. So I appreciate if you show up on the 17th. You'll see me there, and you can present your case to the board members, and I think they're very, very good from what I've seen.
All right.
And I don't think you've been allowed to do that before. I don't think you've been invited. I don't think you've been, but invite yourself if you, if, if, if you call up the executive director and you get anything, invite yourself, you know, those are supposed to be publicly noticed. You're saying they're not publicly noticed, so that's something that we can look into from the attorney's standpoint, to make sure that those, at Bradenton Housing Authority is public notice, because that would be a violation that possibly we could look into. But I'm told that was published, so I haven't seen. If you're saying they're not published, you know, we can look into that and see if that's, but you said it's the 17th, so where, you had to get that information somewhere.
I don't, I didn't.
Did you dig it? Yeah, okay. Well, I appreciate that, and so show up on the 17th, present your case, and I'll be there. I'll, I'm sorry.
It's not putting in the news, but it's my duty.
Okay, well, we'll make sure that gets done, so thank you. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I, you know, this is constant comments. We've always, we've had comments about the housing board most of the time I've been here, and we've had some very embarrassing situations come out of that board as well, you know, especially the directors. One had the FBI come down and haul them off. So whatever we can do to fix this is necessary. I, the expanding the board, I think, is a good, a good idea. We should make sure that we have people who are really interested in, you know, if we can put two more board members on there, and they have a real interest to serve the citizens, that I think that that would be a very good step, you know, that I think we should, would move for, we should move forward on that. Second thing I want to bring up is something that, you know, the way we interact with citizens' comments, we said we were going to have a workshop on this or something like that. You know, my entire tenure that I've been here, we interact with, you know, and we don't interact with every single person that comes up here, but this is where people come up. This is where the pit, they basically feel that this is their last opportunity to address, you know, and we're here, and we're, I don't like the way we're putting them off and waiting. I don't like this process at all. This is not, I've been here for 16 and a half years. This is not the way we've always been doing it. It's not a good policy. Whatever it takes to fix it, I want to move forward on that as quickly as possible.
All right, and yeah, we are going to have a workshop, so that's just timing of things over the last, it's only been two weeks. We're going to plan on that. Something we're going to talk about at the end of some different workshop timings of things. And again, Mr. Roth, I agree with you. I'm trying to hold a meeting decorum and try to do things, and so we don't go down that rabbit hole of negativeness of trying to solve issues and problems there.
But it's worked, but it's worked all the time I've been here.
Right, and that's where we're going. Ms. Barnaby?
I wouldn't say it necessarily has worked well.
Not worked well.
And I also don't think that citizen comment is their last resort. I think all of us are available for meetings, to take phone calls, to interact with our We're here. We're here to serve people.
What do you live?
Excuse me, this is not for debate right now.
I live in the city of Bradenton, and we are elected citywide. Doesn't matter where we live, we answer to 58,000 people. We have 58,000 people as our bosses. So...
Yeah, and again, I know that everyone on here has their emails, and most of them are linked to us seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and the phones are answered. So, you know, we're here, and we are, you asked that question, citywide. Everyone up here is citywide. It's not district-wide, just one zone or ward, what we call them. And every email that I get is answered. It may not be answered by me. It may be answered because I forward it to staff, and I know our staff gets things, and whether code enforcement gets involved, whether the police department gets involved, whether our public records gets involved, every email is answered back. And again, it may not be directly from me because I send it on to the proper department. I think it's quicker to go that way. If you look at a lot of emails I get, I put in my emails, "Please give me a call," because sometimes we can solve an issue sooner, and I will meet with anybody at any time if somebody calls and sets it up. It's there. So that's the thing that's the misnomer. If there's information out there that somebody thinks that we are doing something wrong, whether it's through our planning, our public works, our administration, the council, the police department, the fire department, anywhere, there is other avenues to go above us, you know? Take that avenue. Send it to the FDLE. Send it to the FBI. We encourage people to do those things because none of us up here, and in this job, are there to try to hurt anybody. You know, some of the stuff that we get sometimes isn't worth the grief of when we're trying to help people. No good deed goes unpunished. And I was on the housing authority board when I got on here in 2013, when I got on it as the previous administrator was being arrested. I knew nothing about that. I go into a meeting, and all of a sudden, all this stuff's happening, and it goes. So I tried to work through it and find out. I found out then in 2013 that there wasn't anything as a governing body we could do. So one of my goals was to try to appoint good citizens in our community that will start to hold things accountable. That's all we can do. And as you heard today, we may have found a way to appoint two more citizens that will hold things accountable. That's all we can do up here, so we do care. I wouldn't be in this community, I wouldn't be sitting in this seat if I didn't care. So we're trying, you know, government is frustrating sometimes because it's slower than what we all would like. So we're trying to make that happen, and, you know, again, as far as availability, all of us with these technology today is 724. So, and all the emails that we get, get answered, whether it's public records, whether it's from different departments. It may not just be directly from an individual. It may be from the planning or public works director or the administrator. So, thank you. All right, moving on, we've got consent agenda. I hear comments or a motion to approve consent agenda?
Move to approve.
A.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further comment? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Five.
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yep.
Four?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Passes unanimously. All right, Mrs. Melton?
Next, we have the first reading of ordinance 3095. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida approving, sorry, providing for amendment to the city of Bradenton Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map, changing the future land use designation from urban village to urban commercial corridor for a property located at 201 13th Avenue West, Bradenton, Florida, and more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A, providing for applicability, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing is scheduled for March 23rd.
All right, any comments or just set the meeting?
Mr. Rudicell, I have a comment. Mr. Rudicell, I hand you a document before we, with the state statute. As I understand it, any, and I don't know if you've had time to read it, it wasn't, any ordinance that we pass involving land use, we have to have one public meeting in the evening unless the board votes to waive that. Is that, is that the section I, or did I get the wrong section?
Yeah, no, this is, the section that you're looking at is related to city-initiated rezones or city-initiated amendments to the land use regulations where they're changing the actual list of permitted uses, but, so that is not applicable to this future land use map amendment.
Isn't that, are we changing the, changing the future land use designation from, I don't understand. Help me out.
This, first of all, only relates to city-initiated, and this is not a city-initiated map amendment, but it is also not applicable to amendments to the comprehensive plan.
So what do you mean this is not, how, who's initiating it?
It's being initiated by the CRA, which is the property owner.
Okay. And that's, and you're sure that does not require a evening public meeting?
Yes.
So in what case would we have an evening public meeting?
Well, if the city were, say, rewriting its land use regulations, or it was going to change, you know, the permitted uses and things like that, or redoing its zoning map, you know, the planning department's been looking and, you know, planning commission's been meeting about kind of comprehensive changes to the land use regulations and the zoning map, and that would require those types of meetings.
Also, the 501 tax budget meetings are after hours technically.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but it's referring to ordinances, and, yeah, I understand that, but I didn't know, I haven't seen an evening meeting on anything. And so we're, so in the last four years, we haven't done any land use changes, and there's not been one meeting, meeting since I've been here.
I can't think of any city-initiated rezonings or, you know, changes. I mean, the planning department's probably better positioned to answer that, but I can't think of any off the top of my head at least.
Didn't we just do one with the property there at, between Manatee Avenue and First with, didn't, isn't that a land use change between where they proposed a McDonald's by the, by the...
Starbucks.
Starbucks.
That wasn't city-initiated.
Okay. It has to be city-initiated.
And that was also a comprehensive plan amendment.
Yeah, this is future land use map.
Okay.
All right, so we'll... All right, so we'll move forward, set the date for March twenty-third, twenty-two. Thank you. Mrs. Melton?
This is the first reading of Ordinance three zero nine-six. An ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter eighteen, Article nine, Section eighteen dash two hundred and forty of the Code of Ordinances to adopt by reference the two thousand twenty-one edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, amending Chapter eighteen, Article nine, Section eighteen dash two hundred and forty-one of the Code of Ordinances to update local revisions to the International Property Maintenance Code, providing for severability, providing an effective date. And the second reading and public hearing is also scheduled for March twenty-third.
Okay, any further comment on that? Hearing none, we'll set that date for March twenty-third, twenty-two. Mrs. Melton?
Anyone wishing to address City Council during the following public hearings will please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you.
Mrs. Melton?
Resolution twenty-two dash six, public hearing. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Bradenton granting special use permit number SU dot twenty-one dot five-three-five-zero to operate a daycare facility in the suburban commercial corridor zoning district at five-one-one-five State Road sixty-four East, Bradenton, Florida, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning. Myself, Sakshi, the city planner, representing the planning staff today for this special use application, SU two-one-five-three-five-zero. This is for property located at five-one-one-five State Road sixty-four East, Bradenton. It's a special, it is a special use request to operate a childcare or daycare facility in SCC or suburban commercial corridor. The subject property has three street frontages with two two-way ingress and egress points from Fourth Avenue Circle East. It currently supports an office building of eight thousand eight sixty square feet floor area, including a drive-through faci, bank facility. The applicant proposes to convert the existing building to operate a daycare for one seventy-five children between the age group of three months to five years old. As mentioned before, this property is owned as SCC. City zoning along this corridor is also SCC to the north, south, east, and west, which supports commercial areas along major highways in predominantly developed areas, and is intended to meet the needs of motorists and other consumers through the provision of automobile-oriented commercial development. The future land use here is also suburban commercial corridor. The proposed use is consistent with the development pattern of this corridor and is permissible under SCC District by special use permit. The applicant is proposing to remodel the existing building to support seven classrooms for a capacity of seventy-one younger kids and eighteen to twenty teachers. They also plan to build a, building B over in this picture, parallel to building A for, which will also house seven classrooms and contain hundred-and-three older kids with twelve to fifteen teachers. The capacity or the number of students who concurs with fire department's calculation for, calculation for capacity, and the hours of operation for this facility would be seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, closed on all major holidays. A daycare facility at this site will provide convenient care to serve the employees of the sixty-four center office park, as well as surrounding businesses. Section three point three point one of land use regulation states the standards and review criteria for special use permits. The first criteria states adequacy of ingress and egress to property and proposed structures with particular regards for automobiles and pedestrian safety and convenience, traffic generation, flow and control, and emergency access. The site currently has two two-way vehicular access points existing on Fourth Avenue Circle East, which provides adequate access to the proposed use. Second criteria states that the location and design of off-street parking and loading area in regard to the items in A above and the smoke, noise, glare, dust, vibration, fumes, pollution, and other effects of the use on adjoining properties. Staff here feels that the existing parking lot is adequate for the proposed use. Currently, there are sixty-three parking spots, including four ADA spots, and for a use like this, fifty-nine parking spots with two ADA spots are required. Next criteria states that the location and design of refuse and service areas in regarding to availability, adequacy, and effect upon surrounding properties. The applicant proposes to relocate the existing dumpster to provide more room for the playground for kids. Any refused facility, including the dumpster, location is required to comply with all city requirements. Next criteria states that the utilities in regard to location, availability, adequacy, and comparability with surrounding properties. The proposed project will utilize existing access to the city's portable water and science receiver. Next criteria says the screening, buffering, or separation of any nuisance or hazardous features of the use. Firstly, a ten-feet-wide landscape buffer already exists along all property lines except on the southeast side. The southeast side of the property contains ingress and egress points to neighboring properties along the neighbors, along with neighbors' parking spots. Also, land use regulation section four point three point five point two requires the buffer to be landscaped with a tree every fifty feet. The applicant here is requesting to reduce the tree requirement to the trees already existing on site. Secondly, the playground will be enclosed and secured by a six-feet-high fence made up of block and decorative railing for children's safety. Also, no food preparation or cooking would be done on site. Next review criteria states that the proposed sign and exterior lighting with reference to glare, traffic safety, and compatibility and harmony with surrounding properties. Any lighting or signage shall be in accordance with the city of Bradenton's requirements. Next, effect upon the value of surrounding properties, the use shall not hinder the development of nearby vacant properties or adversely affect their economic value. At this point, staff does not anticipate any negative effect on the value of surrounding properties. Next review criteria states that adequacy of land or building which are to be used. Based on land use regulation section four point three point five point one, for a daycare center with more than thirty children, ten thousand square feet of land is required. The subject property is two acres of land, which is eighty-seven thousand two eighty square feet, and the proposed project itself supports fourteen thousand three hundred ten square feet of floor area. And, next criteria says that the general comparability or appropriateness with adjacent properties and other properties in the district with special consideration given to the proposed hours of operation. The proposed use, staff feels that the proposed use will not conflict with any of the surrounding uses. Next criteria says that the environmental quality of the district in which the use is proposed and the effect the special use permit might have on such quality, there will be no negative impacts on the existing environmental quality of the site. Next, consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. As mentioned before, the proposed use is consistent with signs underlying future land use designation of SCC or suburban commercial corridor, which seeks to serve commercial uses commensurate with suburban arterial roadways. Hence, based on staff's technical findings in response to review criterias for a special use permit, staff is recommending approval of SU two-one-five-three-five-zero. Planning Commission met in public hearing on February sixteen, two thousand twenty-two. Based upon staff and applicant presentations, as well as public comments, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of SU twenty-one-five-three-five-zero.
Thank you. Any questions by the council? All right. We want to call up Mrs. Petrov to give us, she's representing the owner.
Good morning, my name is Patricia Petrov. I'm an attorney at the Dye Harrison Law Firm here in Bradenton, certified in city, county, and local government law. I have been sworn. I do represent the applicant. This, in my opinion, is a wonderful reuse of an existing building. As all of you are aware, this part of your city has been growing leaps and bounds, leaps and bounds. I have lived off of Morgan Johnson Road for thirty-two or thirty-five years, a really long time, and now I have a Home Depot, and I have this, and I have that. But for those of you who have forgotten, you have approved two very large apartment complexes, one behind the Publix, one just north of Morgan Johnson Road and State Road sixty-four. You've also approved a townhouse subdivision right off of Morgan Johnson Road, just past the Home Depot. And then on the other side, where the Long John Silver's is, at that traffic light, there is a pretty sign for the city of Bradenton. I haven't been down there for a couple of weeks, but there's something going in down there, and it looks like another subdivision. This is a much-needed use in this area. I thought it was a very good reuse, especially keeping the, the drive-through bank canopy for some shade for the children in the, in the playground. The lot is large enough, the access is good, it's a very well-used employment center, and the only reason I know that is I spent a lot of time at Coastal in the fall doing rehab. As your staff has given you a very good staff report, it is consistent with your comprehensive plan, it is consistent with your zoning code, it has been thoroughly vetted by your staff and meets all the criteria for a special use permit. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I respectfully request that you approve this application. Thank you.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you. Ms. Petrov, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the site plan correctly. You've got, you're going to have the two buildings there, and then there's going to be play space that is fenced in between the two buildings that they're going to operate. Am I correct? Am I reading?
Yes, ma'am, there's two place, play spaces, both will be fenced in, one is for the younger children, one is for the older children.
Thank you.
Mr. Roth, did you ask that?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Petrov, you reminded me of something funny when you moved out to Morgan Johnson. I remember when, some thirty, some years ago, when members of my church moved out to Morgan Johnson to get out to the country.
Yes, I remember that, too.
Anyway, I, I believe in capitalism, I believe in the free market. I think the one thing that COVID has exposed to us is the need for daycare. And, you know, we, we cannot go to work if our children are not safe, so I'll be supporting this on that, on that assumption alone.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. So, Mr. Riddick, we need to open the public hearing?
Yes.
All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Thank you, we'll close the public hearing. Chair, want to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash six.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Sanders, second by Mr. Roth. Any further discussion? We'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yep.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Approved, five to zero. Thank you, thank you. All right, Mrs. Melton?
Next, we have Resolution twenty-two dash eight, public hearing also. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Bradenton granting special use permit number SU point two-two point zero-one-one-two to construct a private residential dock for property that is, that is separated from the Manatee River by a public right-of-way and public property in the T-five urban center zoning district at five-twelve Riverside Drive East, Bradenton, Florida, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Thank you, good morning.
Thank you, good morning. Myra Schwartz, the planning manager, to, to present this today. We have a request for a special use dock, as Ms. Melton read, five-twelve Riverside Drive East. It is Resolution twenty-two dash eight, case number SU twenty-two zero-one-one-two. The applicant is Brian Soler, a private property owner. The property is situated on the south side of Riverside Drive East, just west of Tarpon Point, and along the connection between Riverwalk Phase One and Riverwalk Phase Two, which is off this picture. There are improvements currently being reviewed by Public Works for improvements along Riverside Drive East that end prior to the location of the proposed dock. Future land use of the property is UCBD, Urban Central Business District. This district is most intensely developed part of the city. It includes subareas like your central business district, Riverwalk, West Historic District, and they together provide a vital place for your social, cultural, and economic interchange. Property is located in your T-five urban center zoning district, regulated by Form Base Code for the property, however, docks are, for a special use, are regulated by land use regulations. The applicant's requesting a special use permit to build a new private dock. It's to be fifty feet long, five hundred square feet, a relatively small dock. Property does not have riparian rights, and it's separated from the Manatee River by Riverside Drive East, a public right-of-way, a second public right-of-way, the old Paseo Drive, which is a connector road, and a publicly-owned property that's owned at two-thirty-one Sixth Street Northeast. Special use permit is required because the dock is separated from the Manatee River by right-of-way and public property. The dock, as you can see, is characteristic of a neighboring dock, fifty feet long, five hundred square feet. It provides adequate side setbacks, city requires ten foot minimum, he's providing twenty-three to twenty-four feet on each side. The applicant's property is here, five-twelve Riverside Drive East, the old Paseo Drive. You've got a triangular piece of property that is not buildable, but it is a platted parcel that's owned by the city, and Riverside Drive that continues up here. This is an area where you might be able to better see the applicant's property, the neighboring dock. There are three total docks on this stretch of Riverside Drive East. The applicant wants to put his dock here. Your site work for River, the Riverwalk connection is to end right about here. Landscape is ending, and your seawall work is ending. This has been confirmed by Public Works. This is a better picture of your improvements to the Riverwalk Phase Two-A.
Could you go back to that slide, please?
Certainly.
You said that Riverwalk is ending, I thought it was ending on up beyond that triangle.
The next picture, I think, will, will show you a little bit better. It's a, it is from the site plan that was submitted to Public Works. You can see that there is a sidewalk that goes just prior to where the applicant wants to build his dock. And then there's going to be a crosswalk here, taking you to the sidewalks that go on this side. Then Tarpon Point is up here.
But the city owns all the way down past this proposed dock?
Yes.
And that's not in the site plan?
No. Your sidewalk is going here, and then the seawall work ends here, and the landscape ends here as well, the new landscape.
That wasn't my understanding, but...
This is the landscape plan, is the next slide. Excuse me, that might show, again, better. You've got existing palms here, more landscape will be added here and the sidewalk.
Mr. Sanders, I think one of the things, I kind of remember some talking about this over the years, when you look back on it, I think at some point, we talked about trying to tie in with the development through Tarpon Point and making it going farther, kind of around, so maybe that is, you know, it seemed like it was more than what that is right there, so.
I think that's exactly right. Tarpon Point, while we have no development plans in at this time for review, it is privately owned and expected to be developed in the future. Okay, so...
Well, that's not my understanding, that we was, we was going to go further, because we own the property clear up to Tarpon Point, and we was going to end it up there, but that's something we need to discuss.
Okay, at this, at this time, I have no further plans. Perhaps Mr. McClellan has more information on what's going on there, but the site improvement permits that we have in indicate work to this degree. General standards, of course, you, you're familiar by now with your general standards for docks, special use docks, there are five of them. Your dock purportance can't be attached to any seawall or other structure. The proposed dock is not to be attached to a seawall or other structure located in the public right-of-way. He is proposing a walkway to go over the seawall. That is something that would require a Public Works right-of-way permit, and may or may not be approved by Public Works. In any case, he has the ability to step over, should that not be approved by Public Works. Setbacks specified by DEP complied with, as I said, are requisite as ten feet, he's providing twenty-three to twenty-four feet on either side. Property owner will sign a grant of easement with the city for usage of waterfront property and construction of the dock. Easement specifies that if the city of Bradenton deems the removal of the dock is... Easement specifies that if the city of Bradenton deems the removal of the dock is necessary, it will be removed at the property owner's expense. The applicant has provided this waiver, it is in your packet, a copy of it, and that will also be included with the building permit, should this be approved. The dock pure appurtenance will become compatible and appropriate with adjacent properties or other properties within the district. The dock is similar in design and length to the next-door neighbors dock and the other two docks that are existing on this stretch. Dock pure appurtenance must be approved by the Department of Environmental Protection prior to issuance of a building permit. Of course, as you know by now, we cannot uphold or withhold a permit by not having a higher permit in hand. We can withhold construction. So that DEP permitting, and for this, it's just going to be a self-certification for a dock this small, will be required to be in our hands prior to commencement of construction. Staff finds that the applicant has met all the requirements for the special use and is recommending approval of SU.22.0112 with the following stipulations. These are your standard stipulations for our special use docks. One, that the dock's kept in good working order and condition, so not to degrade the value of nearby properties. Two, the signed dock affidavit and waiver of liability shall be attached to the building permit for the dock, as I said, he has signed it, and it is available. And three, all other applicable state or federal permits be obtained before commencement of the development. Any conditions associated with required DEP permit will be met at the time of construction. We did take this case before the Planning Commission on February 16th, and they recommended approval unanimously with no stipulations. That's as recommended, but it's no stipulation, well, with recommended stipulations, I beg your pardon. And that's the end of my presentation. I can leave a picture up here for you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Any questions?
Yeah, I got a problem right at the very front of this with explanation. The property owner does not have riparian rights. How can you recommend approval of a dock where the property owner does not have riparian rights? Because this, the, this is, opens up Pandora's Box of anyone, anywhere, that can find a strip of land, can come in and build a dock. I don't care, they might live in Chattanooga, Tennessee, you know? I mean, this, I am, I've been very free with opening, with building docks, long docks. You know, there's only one recently that I remembered, it was like so long, it was obscene, but every one of them had riparian rights. And I don't, I don't, this, there's just way too many problems. This will open up a precedent, that, you know, I could think of strips all over town where people will be coming in and building docks, or requesting docks. And it's just, this is, this should be turned down for the very reason, you buy property, you buy waterfront property, the first thing you do is see whether you've got riparian rights or not. Because if you do not, all you have is a view. Period. So I can't support this.
Mr. Rudisow, look like you had a comment?
I was just going to note, I mean, if the property owner had riparian rights, they wouldn't be here asking for the special use permit. The code sets up a process where if the property owner is separated from the water only by public property or right-of-way, then they can come in and ask for a special use permit. And so that's, that's the process that's set up by the code, and I think we've approved several of them since, since I've been working for the city.
None of the docks in that area have riparian rights now, right now, and there is a special exemption in there. If something changes, they don't hold the right to keep that dock forever.
That's correct, and that's why the applicant's here.
Is the applicant here?
Is Mr. Zoller here?
Yeah, he's here.
All right, so we'll let him maybe talk to you.
And if I can just add one more thing, sometimes we don't know if they have riparian rights or not. It is often unclear, especially when you have these types of scenarios where you have property that was platted 100 years ago with a right-of-way running along the water, and then trying to determine, you know, based on a number of different factors legally, whether they may or may not have riparian rights, which is probably a reason that the city set it up this way, so it would be a, you know, a special use permit, unless they can demonstrate that they have riparian rights. So just some additional background.
Right, but I think that the city had done some research in the past in that area, and we had found that none of those along that area had riparian rights, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are many properties in Ward 2 along Riverview Boulevard, and it depends upon when it was platted, and was it platted in Fogartyville, or was it platted in the city of Bradenton, whether people had those rights or not. But here's the thing, this gentleman owns the property directly across from where he wants to put the dock. Am I, is that correct, Ms. Schwartz?
It's directly across, but there is a parcel between it that the city owned and to right-of-way.
Okay. I do remember a time where someone did come to the city back in 98 or 99, and yeah, I'm pulling the Mr. Gallo thing again, but they did not, they thought they had figured out a way because they had a clear view of the river from their property, but they were not next to the river. And that, while it was initially approved, the city came back in and then reconsidered it, and it was not approved because the people that wanted it were several houses down away from the river, just because they could stand in one bedroom and look and see the river did not constitute them to have a right for a dock. But if you, as I understood it, if the, if the property, I mean, Mr. Rudisow, you're more the expert at this than I am.
Well, and, you know, I, I don't want to put testimony on the record for our city surveyor, but we did meet with Mr. Cronkright, and he had looked at this and laid out the riparian lines, and what he noted was, you look at the map right there, and it looks like the riparian lines would cross the city parcel. The reality is, it does not cross the city parcel. It is, it is all right-of-way in that area. You know, where the grass is, is actually not where the city's boundaries of that parcel would be located. So that was what the city's surveyor had determined, because that was one of the issues he was looking at was, well, would the riparian lines cross the city parcel? And he had determined that they would not.
It's very close.
Those lines are not accurate.
The lines are accurate, but what you're looking at there is the actual improvements, so you're looking at edge of curb and not where the actual parcel boundary is.
But that whole triangle is city property?
Yes, but the, where that line runs through is right-of-way and not the, not the platted parcel.
Plated parcel for the city?
Correct.
But the right-of-way is city property?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I don't think it makes a difference under your code, because the code specifically says city right-of-way or public property.
And I can read that for clarity. This is why the applicant can come forward, is the way that the code is written. It is Land Use regs, Chapter 3.3.3.1, your general standards. Properties which are separated from a water body by a public right-of-way or public property must obtain a special use prior to installation of any dock pure or other appurtenance. It's very clear, very straightforward, and very simple, that the city has allowed people to come forward to request this.
So, any other questions for, yes?
Well, by theory, a citizen can come in here and ask for a million dollars to put into his bank account, just 'cause. If code is loosey-goosey, maybe we should fix it. If mistakes were made in the 90s, I'm not responsible for that, but I am responsible to govern today in an excellent manner, as the preacher said earlier. And also, this is an area that we're, we've been waiting, we've, I was promised high-rises down there a long time ago. Hotels. This is an area that we are all waiting to be converted to higher and best use. You know, that tiki hut was never legally permitted for a restaurant. It just kind of showed up one day. I mean, we approved a tiki hut for special uses, but not, not a grilled restaurant, not, that's just, that's just things that were done in the past improperly. I could expand on that, but I'll leave it as improperly. I just don't, I just think that just opening up this to a dock on a property that does not have riparian rights, they can ask, they're free to ask, anyone's free to ask. So, but, but I just, it just doesn't cut the requirement, and it leads to people coming in and popping docks down in your neighborhood wherever, wasn't there a dock once at the end of the street that got popped in before me? That's, it's, it's just, I can just see scenarios where we just finally got a property back from a lawyer. It cost us $70,000 in five years.
More than that.
So, so, you know, we should not be making mistakes today, just because they were made in the past.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, and what we'll do is bring the, forward, Mr. Zoller?
Picture up here.
The applicant?
I'm not sure Mr. Zoller was sworn.
That's correct.
Okay, so, come up, please raise your right hand. Ms. Melton will swear you.
Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you have anything you want to say, or...
Good morning, Board. I think you guys are doing a wonderful job, and you don't get enough credit. I don't know if I'd be able to have that much patience that you guys have. My name is Brian Zoller. I purchased my home at 512 Riverside Drive East in 2005. A contingency to me purchasing a home, I met with Ruth Sewer, the head planner at that time. She said she didn't have any problem with me constructing a dock there. I met with Bill Lesh, the city attorney at that time. He also didn't have a problem with it. Did I get it in writing? No. And truthfully, I didn't have the money back then to do it, so, but now I do, and I'd like to, I'd like to speak about the improvements. One, I was involved in all the, the improvement workshops over the church here to the east with Kimley Horn presenting them. I thought it was a great process. They did an excellent job on Phase 1. I never would have dreamt that Riverside or the Riverwalk would have been such a success, but it has. So I've got all the confidence in the world that Phase 2, actually, this may be Phase 3, I think Phase 2 went a little bit to the east of us, but this Phase 2 will turn out great. There were three scenarios that they presented. One was just adding landscaping along the seawall. Another one, they added kind of traffic calming islands along there to, and then the third one was shifting, I think that was the one that I see up on the screen, and I haven't seen any of these yet, I don't, but it shifted the sea, or the sidewalk over to the seawall area, so you kind of get like the Bay Shore Boulevard effect like you see up in Tampa, which I thought that was probably the best one. It would shift the road to the, you know, south side of where the sidewalk is now and put the sidewalk up along the seawall, so it would match Phase 1 and potentially go to, you know, to the east of us. But my question is, I haven't seen any advertisements or any, haven't gotten a notice for any of these workshops. Is that still going on? Is Kimley Horn still involved? Because I, you know, I think the people that own the homes along there would like to be involved, or has it just been turned over to Public Works, where, you know, they've just, they are now in charge of putting together plans and, and up for, and maybe once they do that, then the discussions keep going, or what? But so also, in that, all three scenarios, none of them, so we've got two things, when we talk about the seawall, there's two things. There's the seawall, which is from ground level down. That's always been, per discussion, the seawall's in great shape, there's no need to spend a lot of money to rehab it, it's in great shape. Now you've got a wall on top of the seawall that's maybe three concrete blocks high, that's hurting. It's in disrepair, needs, and I've always advocated, you know, in Phase 1, we've got the tubular metal railings there, and that works over there. However, it is at a higher elevation, the river is skinnier there, they don't get quite the wind and wave action. We get, it funnels into here like crazy. I've seen, you know, I've been there for 20, you know, almost 20 years, and I've seen the waves crashing over the seawall, you know, they crash into that, or the wall on top of the seawall. I get spray, you know, I get, we get spray on our houses. If that wall was not there, it would be bad. We get these crazy waves coming through and hurricanes, so I've always advocated, please, 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 keep that wall. It's there, and there's a reason they put that there.
It's a cap.
It's a cap, it's a, you know, wall, and I'm sure it's towelled into the seawall, and it's withstood some good wave pressure, but it is needed. And I know that there's been a lot of discussion to just keep the metal railing from Phase 1 over along here. I'm telling you, I'd get waves right into the house if that, if that happens. So the second part, I think, you know, this is the, I'm a civil engineer, I think this is the engineer in me, I think I can solve the drainage problem along this road, along east, and along 26th Street. You know, the drainage pipes, they're eight-inch PVC coming out of the, you know, road inlets, and they drain out into the river. They used to have metal flap gates on them that, you know, when you get saltwater and steel flap gates, doesn't take long before barnacles and they rust, and, you know, instant, like right when I bought the house, they were stuck open. Well, now they make, they're called Tideflex valves, they're made out of HDPE rubber. They hose clamp onto the end of these pipes.
Mr. Zoller, I'm not, I don't mean to interrupt you, but can we stick to the dock?
Sure. Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Well...
We want to get that.
So, you know, with the, with the, you know, possibly Palmetto boat ramp going away, you know, this is all the more reason why I want a dock, and, you know, it's not, it's just to match the neighbor's size and, in construction, they're there to put, you know, a boat there for the weekend. And, you know, you brought up the point about, you know, tiki hut and Tarpon Point. Well, I would like to point out that I sat through all those meetings, too. They didn't meet any of the rules. They didn't meet setbacks, they didn't meet density, they didn't meet utility stuff, they were putting a 20-foot concrete wall around some guy's house, which, you know, I stood up for the guy. So, you know, the city can do whatever they want, I mean, when it comes down to it. And the reality of somebody in Chattanooga, you know, putting a dock in wherever they want, is you guys can vote it down. I'm having to sign a form, you know, and it's precedent that, you know, a lot of these docks don't have riparian rights. It's appro, I think it's appropriate for me, Ruth thought it was appropriate, Bill did. I'm signing a form that says, you know, at any time, if you want me to take it out, I have to do it on my dime. So, you know, I just, I don't see a problem with it. You know, I'm a little biased, but, so, I'm just asking to do it.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Sanders?
Normally, I would say you're right, but this is not normally. You know, we've had a plan there for quite some time for that to be the extension of the Riverwalk, and so you knew this was coming a long time ago. It's been publicly stated, so now that would interfere with our construction of that.
How?
How?
We're not moving that, none of the scenarios.
Who do I?
Go ahead.
I'll let you fish, I guess.
Go ahead, Mr. Sanders.
Go ahead. We don't have any docks along the first section of the Riverwalk because that would interfere with public access for the, and this would be the same. I don't think you question that we don't have public docks around the first section of the Riverwalk, right?
What's the first section? Oh, Phase One.
Existing now.
Phase One, you're talking about?
No, existing today. If you walk from here to the, we don't have any public docks there. There's one.
Private docks.
Private docks.
Correct.
Private docks.
Correct.
So, that's number one. And you just had this house for sale. I was in the planning meeting when you presented this, and you mentioned something about a developer or somebody trying to buy your property, and you just had it for sale, right?
No, sir.
You didn't?
No, that was the neighbor.
That was the neighbor?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. The neighbor to the left of you looking?
East. Joe, he used to be the art teacher of Rhythm Seaside.
All right, it's a different property. Okay, all right. So, anyway, the wall, the sea wall goes all the way down to the Tarpon Point. And this is the first I heard today that we weren't going all the way down because that sea wall is about to fall over. It's ragged.
The wall.
The wall.
The wall is, correct. The sea wall's in good shape, so they don't plan on touching that, right? Correct?
Correct.
It's the cap.
The cap, right.
That's why I wanted to stress the difference between, because people in verbiage, they get it mixed up.
Right, and there's going to be a development in there, and so we're trying to connect that together. So, that wouldn't be something that I'd be interested in voting for.
But my, I'm sorry, my dock would not be connected to the sea wall like all the other docks. There's a gap, you know, whether it's half inch or whatever, doesn't connect physically to the dock.
But you're coming over the cap?
No.
You're coming over the sea wall?
No, sir.
How you getting to the dock?
As, well, so my neighbors have two little wood steps that they step up and then step over.
So, you're going over the wall?
I don't have to do that. Like she said, I could step over the sea wall. If that's the issue, I have no problem not putting two wood steps in.
But if we have a walkway there for the public?
Correct.
That's going to be something that they, you know, that they would have access to unless you keep a lock on it.
My neighbors, so, and it's typical of the ones along 26th Street, and my neighbors to the west of me that they either have two posts that say, you know, private property, keep off, or, you know, I'm looking for input. Whatever you'd like to see, I could put that there.
Well, I'd be opposed to it.
Ms. Coker, did you have anything?
I just had one little question. It might be, you said you don't have any documentation, but does Mr. Lish or does anything in planning? I mean, if they told him it wasn't a problem, would they have made any kind of notes, or?
I haven't spoken with Bill on it. I mean, my guess is they told him that they didn't have an objection to him coming forward and asking for the special permit, like, in the process.
They'll have to send to the council.
Yeah.
Right. That they didn't have a legal objection that he met, you know, the criteria to come forward and ask.
Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, some of these docks have been there. We know the Riverwalk is going to come through, and then we're going to, it kind of undulates through what I call, you know, the old village of Manatee. But I do, I do want to say one thing. The Palmetto Boat Ramp is not going away. The illegal free parking that everybody took advantage of may change, but that boat ramp is not going anywhere. And I think that is very important for people to know and to appreciate there's a difference.
There's a difference, but if you take away the parking, it's very hard to use it.
If you take away the illegal parking that everybody's been using illegally without giving them parking tickets, I think they need to understand there's a difference there. But I, if we have this, if we have the ability for people to come and petition the council to do this, and there are other existing docks, and he's not going all the way out into the channel, I personally don't see a problem with it.
It's just the same size as the neighbors.
All right.
I mean, so we've had, we've had people come in and want to put in those monster docks. We, rightly so, I think, have had concerns with that because it does interfere with other people's views and other people's use of their property. But this is the same size as everybody else's. If the docks have been there and we're doing the Riverwalk and we're going to make sure that the private property, people put the private property signs up, but that our design allows people to progress along there, I'm having a difficult time understanding what the problem is.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I feel for you because, you know, in a way, it doesn't seem to not make sense or something like that. But it is, there's that legal, there's that legal thing, the repairing rights and all. And also, you've already given the example of what, you know, the Tarpon Point property, you know? What came before us was permission to put a small tiki hut on a point so that the friends and family of the marina could come out and sit, you know. It was never going to be, it was never going to be what it was.
I know.
Now, I can tell you, we were left, this council, we were not told of the secret plans, you know? You know, it was, it was not, it was not, they were not, oh, once they got permission from us to put the tiki hut in, they just moved forward. We didn't vote on a restaurant. We didn't vote on a bar. We didn't vote on a flammable hut. You know, I mean, we did on that, but it was not going to be open for the public. It was never going to be open for the public. It was going to be private use. So, this is the kind of thing where, you know, and the people that you've mentioned, you know, are part of the situation that this is where we got there. You know, this was, this was done by the previous administration. So, I'm just trying to get us off to a good start now of where the proper way of doing things. You know, my concern is not you. My concern is this sets a precedent that opens up the door for snaky characters to come in and do things. And we're not told everything up here. We're making decisions on what's presented to us, you know, in a quasi-judicial hearing. But there are people out there that have nefarious minds. So, I mean, I have, I have to protect the citizens from those people. You seem like a nice person. Doesn't seem like, the one thing I would say is that this, you know, the park that's supposed to go in there, I didn't know it ended right there. It shouldn't. I mean, if we have, if we have a city-owned triangle, I mean, I don't know how we changed those plans there, but I guess I was always assuming it went right up to where the private property meets on Tarpon Point. And I'm still waiting on, you know, the only reason I allowed a tiki hut to come in because they were told we were going to be, there was going to be a condominium hotel restaurant going in there. You know, shazam. I mean, yeah, that's what we want on that, not a tiki hut. And, you know, if I'm misled, shame on you, you know? I mean, the other people. So, I'm sorry, but I think that the plans need to be revisited for the park. And by the way, I do agree with you on the wall and the protection from the water. Because I know people that have a little bit further to the east on the river, and it doesn't even need to be a big storm and the waves come crashing over their, you know, their high sea walls. So, I mean, that's something that, I know that, I know that part of the park got put on hold last. I think we're into it now. I need to look into that. So, but I think it should go down around the bend. So, anyway, I'm just, I'm just kinda stuck on that repairing rights deal.
Can I quickly?
Sure.
I just want to point three things. You say this is setting a new precedent. It's not setting a new precedent. It's already precedent.
Not by me.
Not by you, but there are docks that do not have repairing rights in this.
I can't, I can't, I can't take the blame from lawbreakers of the past.
Getting back to Tarpon Point, yeah, I remember it was a twelve-by-twelve little marina building at the tip. And the tiki huts, you know, they're built by the Seminole Indians, so they don't have to be, you know, and don't have to have a construction from, it was never to that scope or size. And the restaurant was never to that scope of size, but nobody ever had had a problem with that. We had a problem with the three twenty-four-story, two-hundred-and-forty-foot-tall buildings that were presented. And the twenty-foot concrete wall around Bob's house, he's since sold because he was about to have a heart attack. But, and we, you know, we fought so hard that they kept the same density, which was out of code. They kept the same, no setback, you know, they didn't meet setbacks. But they reduced the stories down to eighteen stories with contention that they purchased Bob's home. Well, they did, but they were still monstrosities, way out of scale. There's nothing around the city, Braden or Palmetto even close to that size. It's not even in the general downtown area. I'd also like to point out one other thing. Were you on the board at that time?
I do remember the plans, but they never came to fruition. They never came, they never came to presentation. They were just kinda dangled as, wouldn't this be cool? And the one thing the city's looking at, as we're trying to make this a more prosperous city, is, you know, highest and best use. And also, you know, at that time, we were trying to lure hotels, you know.
I understand.
So, and we were short of hotels. And one of the beauties was a hotel so close to the hospital because people come from East Manatee County and their loved ones in the hospital, and they want to stay there for a few days. So, it made a lot of sense, and it was, it was extreme. And, yes, and I fought Riviera South Shores, you know, Maggio's project, you know, to where, but once it looked like that wasn't going to happen, we got that cleaned up. That's development. And it never came, and yes, and it was never more than talk. It was never more than talk.
The other thing I want to point out, the city dedicated from, what's the road right? I heard a different name besides First Street. They're called Old Benson Road or something. But from where Sixth Street meets the road in front of me, all the way to the tip, the city gave that to the developer at that time. I don't know if that's still legal or what, but they said, as part of your development, we'll just give you this road. We're not going to offer it up for public sale or anything. You can just have it as part of the deal. So, I don't know if you remember that or not.
That was before me, and that was, that deal has been questioned a hundred times by a thousand people. And it involved, it involved a friend of a highly placed, a previous administration person. Nefarious acts have happened.
And so, my other real quick question while I've got the floor. Since this has gone, you know, so, decades, over a decade, and with no, you know, movement towards a permit, will, you know, I know they're drawing up plans right now, will it still have to now go through the Architectural Planning Board and City Council?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Because nobody in the neighborhood, we all wanted something, hopefully to scale, a little bit more scale. And I understand there's a give and take, but what was approved was crazy.
And it never got approved.
It did get approved.
The restaurant?
The buildings and everything, the whole, I've got all the plans. It was approved. They gave the road, everything.
Then if I stand corrected on that.
And right after that, the market tanked, so they didn't move forward with construction.
You're right. You're talking about on the other side of Tarpon Point, where the Shoreview Apartments are now.
No, from the tip.
Can we say on top?
All the way down to, you know, where the blue building is, that's the marina.
Yeah, and again, I'm going to try to keep us on the docks so we can, we can talk about development forever, just trying to do it, so.
I will tell you that one of our staff brought all of our cards and put it at the back of the room for this meeting so anyone here can grab a card to get in touch with us.
Yeah, so that's, that's good. So, is there anything pertinent to the dock before we go to the public hearing?
I had a.
You have a question?
Well, I just, okay, go ahead.
We gotta get to the public hearing.
Just was going to make a comment because I feel, I feel like he's getting a little bit brushed with a paintbrush of sins from the past, from other things. And I don't know, I do feel like it's right in the plans for what we want for Riverwalks. I don't know that, I mean, I hope you are taking seriously that part about having to remove it at your own expense because I think you could end up in a place where we're going to have better, a higher and better use for it.
That's fine.
But I feel like, you know, at this point, you know, it's at his own risk, and I'm not, I don't feel like I should stop him from what he's planning.
All right, so why don't we go to the public hearing if there's nothing further, and then we'll have another chance for the council to debate if they want to. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 22-8 with the three stipulations that were put in by staff and approved by the Planning Commission.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote to approve Resolution 22-8. Ward two?
Yes.
Three?
No disrespect to the applicant, but no.
Four?
No.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Passes three to two. Thank you. All right, moving on, a new business by department head, city attorney and council. We'll go for our executive director of the CRA coming in. Katerina, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, City Administrator, Katerina Gereikosiren, CRA Executive Director. I come before you as a continuation from December meetings that we had with the City Council and CRA. Back on December fifteenth, Mr. Marshall Gabuti, who's here with us today, is the president of Pearl Homes, requested from both the City Council and the CRA Board for us to do a definition that both parties would agree of what constitutes commencement of construction, and additionally asked for an extension in order to meet the deadline for that commencement of construction. So, both boards directed Mr. Ruta Sel and myself to bring back an amendment to the boards and from the land use restriction agreement that we have with them, and which we did. So, on December twenty-first, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, the City Council and the CRA Board approved the First Amendment to the amended and restated Lura. And the two changes were to extend the deadline from January first, twenty-twenty-two, to March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and also to put a clear definition of what commencement of construction was. In the First Amendment, the definition was that the developer has installed an elevator pit with concrete footings. Being that this is the only date before the March eighteenth deadline for the developer to meet that, we're coming before you with a proposed Second Amendment that states that they've met that requirement. In your agenda package, you have some pictures that were taken. So, on February eighteenth, they began throwing in and constructing that elevator pit. And you see some additional pictures from March second. Yesterday, the building official and myself went to the site because we wanted to kind of look and take further pictures. This is a picture of one of the elevator pits that were constructed, and we actually saw that there's two of them. So, in both where the two buildings are going to be, both elevator pits have been constructed. And this is just a general picture from the. And this is just a general picture from that site. Uh, so the developer is here before you or here with you if you have questions or concerns. And also with him is Mr. Steve Hammond, who's the VP of Construction for the Framework Group.
Any questions?
No.
All right. So, um, we need a motion to approve the second amendment to amended and restated land use restrictions agreement for the Met?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Roth and a second by Ms. Barnaby. Any further discussion?
If I could, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for getting, uh, getting this done and, and being gentlemen of your word. I appreciate that. But I want to see stuff coming out of that ground. We have people here that need these, these homes, these apartments. So please, with all due haste. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Start the vote. And Ward three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Moving forward, Mrs. Singer.
Um, good morning. Robin Singer, uh, Planning and Community Development Director. So at your February ninth meeting, um, we requested that we come back with a, a copy of the comprehensive plan as it currently, um, exists. Uh, so we've included in your package, um, uh, the plan as we've deciphered from the, um, two thousand and nine. Going, moving forward, there's been approximately twenty-seven amendments. Uh, most of those have been map amendments. Uh, just like you reviewed today with a small scale amendment, there's been nineteen of those twenty-seven, uh, were in fact, uh, map amendments. Um, the, um, the version that we included in the package, uh, all couple hundred pages of it. It constitutes, um, the plan as approved by the state, um, and modified over time through amendment process. It includes a future land use element, transportation, public facilities, coastal management and conservation, recreation and open space, housing, capital improvements, integral coordination, public school facilities elements. And lastly, the property, uh, private property rights element that you just added to the plan at the end of last year. Um, we also have a historic preservation element and a design element. It's a little unusual, but that's something that the city has chosen to include. Those are not required elements of the comprehensive plan. Uh, those are in addition to. And so the description of the elements and what they need to include is found in Chapter one sixty-three of Florida statutes. Um, when you do that initial amendment, um, that, that initial creation of the plan, rather, um, it is based on data and analysis, and that is, um, starting on page two hundred and sixty-five of the package, um, that you received. That's where it starts, the data and analysis. That data and analysis hasn't been updated since two thousand and nine. Uh, but that was the basis for your original plan. It is not required to be updated under the state statutes, but, um, it remains as it was originally. We could at any time update the, that data analysis and as a part of updating, um, the plan. Um, so the last complete update, um, was in two thousand and nine. As I said, there's been twenty-seven amendments, nineteen of those are map amendments. The last evaluation as required under the statutes was in two thousand and sixteen. And you'll find that in the package materials. And let me get that page number for you. Um, that was a letter written by Ms. Hartley, um, in two thousand and sixteen, and that's on page five twenty-three. What follows that are the actual amendments under Ordinance, um, three thousand and two, uh, which updated, um, the comprehensive plan according to the statutes. Uh, specifically, there were requirements for sea level rise and other, um, uh, storm surge requirements that were included in the coastal management and conservation element. So that was a major amount, amendment to follow that last evaluation that was done in two thousand and sixteen. So what the statutes say under, uh, again, under Chapter, uh, one sixty-three is that at least once every seven years, each local government shall evaluate its comprehensive plan to determine if plan amendments are necessary to reflect changes in state requirements uh, in this part since the last update of the comprehensive plan and notify the state land planning agency as to its determination. So that letter that Ms. Hartley wrote in two thousand and sixteen satisfied that requirement. Um, and then what followed is if the local government determines amendments to his comprehensive plan are necessary to reflect changes, uh, the local government shall prepare and transmit within one year. And so that was the ordinance, um, three thousand and two. There have been other amendments since then, uh, and specifically the, the property rights element, um, update was to, again, bring us into compliance with state statute. We're prohibited from moving further with any other comp plan amendments unless we had done that. So some of the amendments, um, at the state level, it, it reflected that kind of, um, uh, a method where you, in order for you to move forward with anything in your comprehensive plan, you have to make those amendments first. Others, um, it generally can get taken care of during that seven-year amendment, evaluation and amendment process. But the evaluation process currently, it's very simple. Um, it's, it's nothing like it was back in the day. I think Mr. Roth indicated he was part of a committee that reviewed, that was the Evaluation and Appraisal Committee back in two thousand and four. That was a much bigger process back then, uh, when the state made changes in two thousand and eleven, drastic changes to comp plan, um, the requirements and the requirements for updating. Um, but I also point out that, um, local governments are encouraged to comprehensively, comprehensively evaluate as necessary, update comprehensive plans to reflect changes in local conditions. Plan amendments transfer, uh, should be reviewed pursuant to a, a different section. So in other words, we're encouraged to always be looking at and updating our comprehensive plan. So it's not out of, uh, the ordinary, um, to do that on a regular basis as the city deems necessary. So, um, our next evaluation requirement for that seven-year requirement is due in September first of two thousand and twenty-three. And generally what we do is we'll wait to the end of the legislative session just to see if any changes have occurred that have to be incorporated into the plan prior to writing that letter, uh, that says whether or not we have to make those changes. And then we have approximately, we have one year after that, um, to make those. The penalty, if you don't make those changes, uh, is just that you can't make any other changes to your comp plan. So it's not a, a severe penalty, but it's certainly something that keeps us on our toes and, and keeps us, um, evaluating our, our, um, reports and our plan. So the next steps, uh, and, and neglected to include one major step is, uh, to transmit this, uh, plan and all the amendments, all the ordinances, um, to municode for publication. Um, it's not just a matter of re-adopting or taking a look at what you have in front of you today. It's a matter of we send all of the ordinances and basically municode goes through the steps to create the plan to make sure that everything's been incorporated. So rather than, you know, just trusting my word for it, um, municode would take care of a lot of that. I think that's a, a critical step in the process because, uh, you want to have the plan out there published before you start to evaluate it and you ask people about it. Uh, you want to have it out there published so that everybody can see it. One particularly important thing, uh, in our comprehensive plan is where we establish densities and intensities, um, in the future land use element. We don't have densities limit, uh, listed in the, in the, um, land use regulations or in the form base code. They're listed in the comprehensive plan. So it's important when somebody is going to develop a property that they understand what their limitations are under the comprehensive plan. You've also seen some use limitations. Uh, recently, we amended some of those. I think that's important, um, to have that out there published so that everybody can see it, so that everybody can remain compliant. We do, when we review our petitions, as you saw today, we review them for compliance with the comprehensive plan. Um, however, I, I think it's important that we, um, get it out there published so that somebody who's planning a project has all the information necessary to develop the project in accordance, um, with the plan. So, um, I think that's one of the critical steps that we need to take, and we need authorization from city council to go ahead and do that. And we'll begin working with the clerk's office and city attorney's office to make sure that we have everything, um, together and, and, uh, transmit that accordingly. Um, I think another good step to take would be to have a workshop presentation of the plan. Um, some, you know, planning isn't the expert in all of the elements. Uh, Public Works would probably have, you know, make the presentations on the transportation element and the public facilities element. And we may call on other, um, staff to, uh, make presentations that included in some of the other elements. Um, so I think having a workshop presentation because, uh, trying to do all of that in one regular meeting, uh, I think could be a little, it could be a little lengthy. Um, and so if we give you that, I think it's a good starting point for everybody to understand where we are with the plan today. Uh, so then following that, there's a number of different options. Um, one is that we could do a full review and update. I would recommend under those circumstances, we hire a consultant to do that. I did speak with a, um, a planner representative with Holmes Beach. Uh, it was a lengthy process for them. Um, he didn't know off the top of his head how much it actually cost, um, but, but it can be costly. I, I think it's a decision you would make after you've had a staff presentation on what, the way the plan currently reads, uh, to decide whether or not you'd want to go through that full update process. Uh, another option or in addition to would be if you're having, um, that joint meeting with the county, if you wanted to discuss whether there should be some kind of coordinated review, particularly of transportation and housing as sort of shared concerns that are countywide and aren't just within the city. Um, but that's a possibility too. And whatever review the county is going through on their comprehensive plan, we can coordinate with them. And it could save us a, a little time and trouble and perhaps money, um, in, in coordinating that kind of review. I know that the county offices are going through a lot of transition right now. Um, so it's, it's, you know, I've, the person I called is no longer there, and that was like the day after I called. Um, so, you know, we, that's something that remains to be seen, what that coordination, what form that would take. Uh, another, uh, possibility and, and something I recommend, again, depending on how you feel about the plan after you've seen the presentations, is perhaps the citywide visioning process. And I'm not, not a super in-depth one because I think people lose interest if it takes too long. But I think if we had ward by ward, we had public meetings, and then we had maybe one for the business community. Um, and then follow that up with a citywide survey that could be online. Uh, again, we'd hire a facilitator for that, um, but I would keep it a short and sweet process. And it would just be in establishing, um, priorities. You know, we, you, you all probably, I'm sure, already know what's important within your wards and what, what the major issues are. But I think if citywide, we can kind of establish a list of priorities, that can help guide us in the comprehensive plan. It also helps guide us with capital improvements, uh, capital improvements and, and other kinds of improvements throughout the city. Um, you could go more granular on that and take it down to ward or neighborhood plans if you wanted to. And there is some neighborhood planning information that's currently in the comprehensive plan. Um, uh, and, and that's by choice. I mean, I think that, that gets you down to the more of the details. You know, people talking about whether or not they want sidewalks, street lighting, you know, street trees, um, uh, other kinds of improvements, utility improvements in their area. Um, and, and so you get down to the more minute changes that you may want to see. And that could, again, feed in to the comprehensive plan. And, and lastly, um, the possibility of focusing on one area, uh, which could be a charrette or a workshop. For example, you had one, you know, if you wanted to focus on Village of the Arts, or you wanted to focus on another particular neighborhood, um, and maybe mixed use and what's important to that particular neighborhood, and you see it, you know, the downtown is sort of an economic driver for the city. You know, do you want to take a look at that? We are sort of taking a look at that through, um, our work with Dover Coal on, uh, a report card for the form base code. So it kind of covers the same areas that. But you could look at other areas, particular in the city. Um, but I think for starters, you know, the ability to send the plan up to municode, uh, get that published. And then, and, and simultaneously, we, we can come before you with staff presentations on the individual elements of the plan.
Mrs. Singer, thank you for that information. Um, and obviously you, you had mentioned probably having the workshop to really get out the information. And maybe do you think, and I know I talked with Mr. Perry and we said certain dates, but April sixth, is that enough time to get with the Public Works and the others to get a workshop?
Um, I just talked to Jim about it this morning, so I'm not, it's a little short notice on him. But, um, I think, I think we can put something together for that.
Something together where it would be, where that would be the only, the sole focus
Yeah.
of that morning workshop to, to go through and get as much information. And, and then I would, I would suggest any of the council people that want to maybe get with Robin and Jim on, you know, maybe some of other questions that might come up or something like that. Um, Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, um, I, I'd gotten with Ms. Singer, uh, several times, uh, m- most recently, and particularly since the council took action on, um, revisiting the comp plan. And, and I think there's some, um, sentiment out there that probably prompted that five oh vote, I think is what it was, was maybe it is time to look at the comp plan. But I think Ms. Singer's presentation today is about asking for direction, how deep a dive we want to do. And I think she did a good job of taking that to you to educate all of us, including me, on what the comp plan includes and the various approaches and the comprehensiveness of it. Um, and, and, and both her and I, and, and all of us need some direction in that regard. So a workshop is a great, a great, uh, direction to go in. I, I hear terms like comp plan, and they get slaughtered frankly, a- and I'm as bad an offender of that as anybody, um, in a lot of ways. And, and Robin and Myra, they're technical experts in, in this. And it's technical work. It really is for the most part. So I appreciate what she's done in putting this together to make it digestible for me, and, and I assume you all as well. And, uh, on a additional note, in meeting with Robin and some of her staff, we have looked at a lot of the issues about revamping policies and procedures and processes regarding planning. It, it's a pretty significant undertaking that she has walked into. Um, and, and when we look at other side issues about permitting and, and the connectivity between, um, design review over at engineering or, or permitting and plan checks and the like, there's definitely disconnects there that are problematic that we're trying to solve, and, and people have some good ideas about it. Some are technical, uh, platforms that might be able to put together things that are like an aged list. Why is this permit taking more than thirty days? Some may be, uh, and it alerts people so that we don't have someone coming in telling us it's been fourteen months and really not much has happened in the last ten. That kind of thing. So we, we're trying to address all that, you know, there's personnel, there's training, there's staff managerial issues, manner of control. And, and I just want to tip my hat to Robin to, uh, uh, you know, I, I've been asked by counselors, uh, how's it going at planning? I said, I haven't been able to really do a deep dive into it about a month or so, you know, maybe a, a couple months ago. And since I have, Robin has been very receptive and very helpful and, and very forth thoughtful in where she thinks we can go to improve things. So if you give us all a little bit of time, we're going to try to deliver what you all want and make things better for what the citizens want as well. And, and Robin's going in that direction in my opinion.
So is April sixth enough time?
I would defer to Ms. Singer on that.
Yes. Okay, because we're just presenting on what's already there. We're not making recommendations on what may come of it.
So it'd be more than, uh, Ms. Coker?
Oh, just a question. Uh, so to be clear, we're just talking about comprehensive plan. We're not, are we talking about permitting and all the processes? Or that's?
We would probably want to do that at a separate meeting if you, if it was your pleasure, yeah.
I would think so, but I just want to make sure we're not going to
Yeah.
go off too much in one direction and not.
No, that, that, that's good. Try to keep it kind of, you know, organized. And, and I think as Robin just pointed out, uh, what is there and, and what would involve and getting direction out of that meeting. So that we can approach you all with maybe some timeframes and budgets, um, things like consultants, uh, you know, for a full-blown comp plan. I'd imagine that's on the order of the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, and I don't want to, oh, indeed, yeah.
This is not a cheap, cheap, I mean, you can't go to CompPlansRS and grab something off a shelf.
Yeah, they got to go it out in the, I mean, there's just so much work that goes into it that the consultant does. Virtually no department, n- no planning department I know does not engage in a consultant. I, I haven't seen. And I'm sure there are some that haven't, but, but, but most of all the reviews of the comp plans that are full-blown reviews have, have involved consultants. And we have too in the past when we developed the, the two thousand and nine plan, I'm pretty sure.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, so, um, uh, having, uh, been on the ear committee with the last comp plan and then being on council when it got put into place, I, I could tell you that mainly at that time, what we were focused on was, uh, an archaic comp plan that was dysfunctional, and we were basically just doing, um, land use regs stuff, you know, at which all the maps came out of all that. We really didn't get in, and from the discussions I've heard from other people on the DS here, um, is that I, I think we're taking, looking at the bigger comp plan, the broader comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan of who we're going to be and what, what we want to be. We didn't get into that the last time. We didn't get into that the last time. It was just maps, boundaries, lines, usages. So, you know.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Ms. Barnaby, I would like to take a five-minute recess if we could.
Sure.
Yep, let's take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Hey, Robin.
Should down for 20 minutes.
Robin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we were requested to author, and I will, at this time, offer a motion to authorize staff to forward the comprehensive plan to MuniCode for publication and to pursue the chosen actions for the updated plan. And at this time, I believe that the chosen actions are to begin the process with a workshop and then go from there. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward 4.
Yes.
5.
Yes.
1.
Oh, yes, sorry.
2.
Yes.
3.
Yep.
Curious.
Sorry.
No, no, thanks.
All right, moving forward. We have on the agenda, table during the February 23rd, 2022, council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I would offer a motion that we take Resolution 22.9 off the table for discussion.
All right, is there a second?
Could anyone second?
Yeah.
Okay, second.
Second by Mr. Roth. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take off the Resolution 22-9 off the table. Start the vote in Ward 5.
Yes.
1.
Yes.
2.
Yes.
3.
Yep.
4.
Yes.
Approved, 5 to 0. All right. Let's move forward, Mr. Perry.
Mayor, Council, appreciate the revisiting of our favorite subject of solid waste. I'm going to try to keep this fairly brief, and brevity isn't my strong suit, but I'm going to be pretty brief. And I'm going to pitch it to Mr. McClellan to pick up where we left off. I don't want to be redundant in presenting to folks the problems and solutions. Jim can do a little bit of that. But I think we all have to come to a certain realization that it isn't working, our solid waste program overall, at this point. I've been asked by reporters frequently this week to give some talking points and do some sound. And they say, why? And I said, because it's not working. And it's not working for three main reasons. We don't have the staff to do four different things, which are garbage, refuge, recycle, then yard waste, and bulk item pickup. Jim will give you the numbers on the staff. Secondly, it's an illusion that things are actually being recycled. It's a sad illusion. You could probably, if you wanted to get more, characterize it a little bit more strongly, say it's perpetuating a fraud, because people that put their things into a blue bin believe that they will be recycled and put into an environmentally productive and sustainable type of product. That's not happening. It's not happening here. It's not happening in Seattle. It's not happening in Boston. It's not happening anywhere. And there's multitudine reasons why. Our problem, and across the spectrum, as pointed out in Florida Governing Magazine, is that there's contamination. And as much as we try to do public awareness to get folks to abide by recyclable rules, there's a complete misunderstanding about what is recyclable and what isn't. And there's some people that try to abide by those rules very strictly and do it in accordance with those rules, and there's some that don't. And when they, when they co-mingle, Jim can show you the photographs, what happens is a truck from Bradenton dumps a load on a tipping floor at the material recycling plant. And then a truck from Manatee County dumps a load on the tipping floor at the material recycling plant, and so on and so forth. And as you look at that, you can't tell whose garbage is whose, you can't tell anything. So basically, that load then has to go for twice the price, not $40 a ton, but now $80 a ton to the landfill. And it costs us almost twice as much to do that. So not only is it not working, but it's costing us more as well. So for these reasons, basically, we have to revisit it. We want to grow recycling. Recycling is a good program. We all want to see environmental positive impacts and try to contribute to a more sustainable world and environment. But what we're doing isn't doing that. And so we're proposing some revisions that Jim can talk about as it relates to what we're calling the three Bs. The bins, using the blue bins, using bags, and bundling without ties. We have a proposal for an amendment, basically, that will remove some, what we believe to be, technical objections to this as it relates to tying of the bundles and the impracticality of that for yard waste and things like that, palm problems and the like. Jim can go over that information with you. But to basically close out, we're trying to grow recycling. And I think, basically, when we start out with 10 tamper-proof, 10-yard containers, and I hope we have the diagrams that show the specs of those 10-yard containers, and we will put those in high-recycle areas, we'll start with 10, safe areas at fire stations, other public accessible, spread-out facilities where people don't have to drive eight miles. They might have, there is an inconvenience. I have to point that out. There is an inconvenience. But to know that your recycles are really being recycled, to know that you're part of the solution, and for us to know that we're really doing recycling, and we can redeploy those assets that we're doing it in curbside now to things like yard waste that are a problem, there's a benefit to that. And that's what we're asking you to do. We're not asking you to ignore that there's an inconvenience to people. There is. There's going to be an inconvenience to me. But I'm willing to do it. It's not that much of an inconvenience, because I know my recycle will go into this tamper-proof container that has a 60-inch-long by, I think it's five or six-inch height, and you put cardboard in there. I get stuff from Amazon all the time. I think my wife owns stock in it, because she just orders so much stuff, you know? Yeah. And it goes, the cardboard goes in. So you put it in there, and it's tamper-proof. And the side port for your bottled water and things like that, your plastics and other things, that's, you can't put a couch in there. You can't contaminate it too much. Conceivably, you could put different items in there. But that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to make a program, basically, where we can take that recycle and we can actually get it recycled. The market has fallen out on recycling. I mean, there's, no one disputes that, that there used to be a commodity price when they were building a lot of cities. I think in China, you used to buy a lot of it and the like. And so there was a, there was a pretty good commodity price. And most of the recycling in this country, at the local government community, was built on that. But that's not here anymore. There's just no market for it. And so it's not like we make money off recycling materials. It costs us money. So without, I'll turn it over to Mr. McClellan to get the details of this.
I have one question.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Before you say, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Have you, you mentioned this, you mentioned this last time, and I wanted to ask that question of the fire department. Have you approached them and having this recycling bin at their fire stations?
Leave it to Jim.
You're going to leave it to Jim?
No, I just to answer the question.
Oh. Well, I didn't, I just, I just wanted to know, since they're here, they could speak to it, if they've been asked that that's, that they accept that. I mean, that may be a problem, maybe getting in their way of doing stuff. I don't know. That's their call.
We have not had a detailed conversation with them. I've had conversations in passing with Chief Gier. But before anything was placed on their facility, it would be positioned in a means to not interfere with any operations of the fire station.
And right now, with the 59th Street Station being Station 3, that's, obviously, we have the Red Cross building there. It's a pretty large landscape of the site, so we can, probably shouldn't be an issue.
Well, GT Bray already has a recycling area. So I've, people have mentioned that a lot to me when I've talked to them on the phone. So it might be in coordination with the county. And just to throw that out real quick, the county is in negotiations or have RFP'd their trash pickup now. So I believe you're going to see changes there.
You said the county, and look who walks in.
Yep. Ah, the county.
Look what the cat brought.
Perfect timing.
And just to reiterate, we do have a floor amendment, basically, a written version of a floor amendment. I don't know if it's been circulated yet, but I'll turn it over to the floor over to Mr. McClellan this morning.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council, Mayor, Jim McClellan, Director of Public Works and Utilities. As Mr. Perry mentioned, we really have the crux to this. Why we're here, why we're considering having to make any kind of changes, is a manpower problem. We have plenty of trucks. We just don't have the people to drive them. So something has to change. And I know I've verbalized it as to what that problem is. And so I thought maybe a little visual aid might help as it relates to it. And this is something that we'll build upon and share with, when we reach out to the community as part of what I'll talk about in terms of our outreach. So, whoops. Going the wrong way.
We're into cloning now?
Yes.
That's how we're getting more drivers.
I thought I'd pick on Mr. Cho, our Superintendent of Solid Waste, and start off by saying, we have 51 positions, so 51 faces that are available for us, budgeted in our annual budget. Currently, we have 13 openings. So you take away 13 people. As part of that 13 people, there are also administrative people, mechanics, people who work in the yard that aren't part of the collection process. So on top of that, every day, and it changes day to day, there will be people out sick, there will be people on vacation, there will be people on FMLA, there will be people on workman's comp, there will be people on LWOP, leave without pay, because they just decide, I'm not coming today. Okay? All of that leads to absences and kind of coming to a result of, here's what we've got available for an operational staff to do garbage, both residential and commercial, yard waste, recycle, the whole nine yards.
Is that software saved from 2008 when we eliminated a lot of jobs? I'm just.
Okay. So what we start with, our priority has always been garbage. And it always will be. And I think you people have all heard from residents saying, we don't have any problem with your garbage flushing. Those guys are great, we're very happy with them. Okay? It's the other stuff. It's the yard waste and recycle. So we start off with this available operational staff in the morning, and then assignments are made to garbage for all of those other areas, for the residential garbage, the commercial garbage. All of that gets set aside. And when you're done, on an average day, we have seven people left. That's seven people to collect, as it was, yard waste and recycle. Now, a yard waste truck or a recycle truck is a two-person operation. So that allotment equates to three two-man trucks available on any given day. There are five, every day, there are five routes for yard waste or recycle. If we have them together, that's 10 routes that would have to be covered by three trucks. It's not possible. Just can't be done. So we made that decision months ago that we had to go to alternate week. The idea was we would be able to at least attack each waste stream on a weekly basis. However, that waste stream is still being attacked with this minimal amount of people, with two, sometimes three trucks. When we put four trucks on the road... When we put four trucks on the road, it's because we're pulling staff from other areas within Public Works to cover them on a short-term basis, leaving a void behind where they left from, from whatever section they were in. So ideally, we would have ten two-man trucks each week to do yard waste and recycle. And when we were fully staffed or nearly fully staffed, that was possible. It's just not anymore. And so we were banging our heads of trying to stay ahead of it. And right now, for instance, this week is a recycle week. We're in day three of the week and we're on schedule. We've had two trucks, both Monday and Wednesday, I mean, Monday and Tuesday, doing recycle collection. They were able to complete those five routes each day, but it's killing them. And they're working until late hours of the day, early hours of the evening, in order to complete those routes and stay ahead.
And they start?
They start at five-thirty sometimes. It's a long day. And it's, it's, it's killing them. And, and we have people, I mean, we've got another person that has to go on workman's comp because his knee is coming out. I mean, it's hard work and it's non-stop. So that's what led us to being where we have to look at things. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be considering any changes to the recycle program as we're talking about if we didn't have to. And I'm hoping that we can get this kind of information out to the public to help them understand that this is not just because. There's a reason.
I think on the staffing front, it's also noteworthy to remind each, everyone that we have implemented a two-dollar-and-seventy-four cent an hour raise for each, you know, of the positions, the labor positions associated with their commercial driver's license and, and, uh, solid waste workers one, which don't have CDLs. And we're, there's some promise coming from that, but it's not a silver bullet. We also have implemented incentives as well. So it isn't like we tried to, haven't tried to attack the labor situation with what typically would be the proper incentive, price, you know, hourly wages. That should increase supply. It has not yet materialized.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just want to verify that I'm remembering correctly. It used to be that we paid our employees every two weeks for eighty hours. Because of, of the lack of staff, the lack of people that are willing to, to work, we're now paying the individuals that do come and do work. They're getting overtime to the tune of a hundred and thirty hours every two weeks?
Um, I, I, I would defer if Mr. Cho has a rough idea of what you think that might be. It's going to vary week to week, but...
Understood. It depends on how many, how many trucks we have go and how many routes we have, but on the average...
We, we have some employees that make a hundred and thirty, but majority of them last week made anywhere from a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty hours.
For a two-week cycle.
For two weeks.
Okay.
Keep moving.
Thank you.
There's a lot to cover. I didn't mean to, to...
I haven't...
There's so much in this presentation that Jim has.
So again, that led us to the decision that we, we would be considering a transition from our curbside collection to centralized, um, collection of recycle that we really believe will help grow recycle because we will be able to, through this process, help clean up the waste stream and clean up the recycle that we're getting. Under, another misperception that a lot of the public has issued in emails to the council is that we're getting revenue from the recycle. Absolutely not. We pay seventy dollars a ton to take the material to the recycle facility. Period. There's no money coming back to us. Any money they generate from it, they keep for themselves. So there is no, there was, but there is no longer.
Can I help you with that? Because we've all been getting emails and there is, there's so many misconceptions out there that, um, that people assume. So one of the things I keep hearing from one individual specifically is acting as though our bill, which is water, sewer, and garbage, right?
Yes.
But they're acting as though the garbage is broken into garbage, yard waste, and recycle. And I know it's not. So I just want to hear you say that. So we're starting one flat fee to haul everything away.
There's actually, there's two charges on the bill that are related to solid waste. One is the general collection fee that we charge, which I believe is ten-sixty-five per month to the residents. And then a six-ninety-one fee, which is the tipping charge for disposal at the landfill. That total, seventeen-fifty-six, um, is the total solid waste fee, which covers garbage, recycle, and yard waste.
But what I keep hearing, and you can tell these people this all day long, but we need to get it out there, is that, well, I'm not getting my money's worth out of my recycling and/or my yard waste fee. You're not paying a recycling or yard waste fee. We're charging, we're charging a flat fee to pick up everything that's on the curb.
Correct.
And there's no savings to be had by anybody because we're actually spending more than we used to.
Correct. Especially in terms of, of recycles.
Can I ask my question then?
Sure.
We're asking questions. And I don't know this. Are there private companies? Is there, are there people that you could have take over recycling for us or the bulk items? Does it have to, because...
There's always a contractor willing to take the job with the government. And what I would imagine they would do is say, sure, we'll pick it up, but we can't guarantee that that recycle is going to actually be recycled and if there's any associated cost. You'd end up probably paying more for a recycle program, in my opinion, than you would otherwise. I have a list of a bunch of Florida cities that have, that have done away with it. And in a lot of cases, the reason why they've done away with it, and nationwide, so the list is nationwide, but includes Florida as well, is that the material recycling facilities closed, actually closed. And I can put it up on Elmo and show you the reasons. It's usually cost, it's MRS, material recycling facilities closed, or labor. It's one of the three. It's everything we talk about. Those are the reasons why. And so yes, there is. We could, we could sub that out. The reality is, is that I don't know if people would be willing to pay that rate because it's such a money loser. We're just the one losing the money now. The consumer would look at it and go, I don't know. That's what I think would happen with it.
We, we actually did get a price from one of our, actually, the place that we take our recycle to, which is a facility run by one of the haulers. We asked them for a price for what it would take for them to take over recycle. And it's more expensive than, than what we're paying now. Or not what we're paying now, but what we budget in terms of our recycle budget.
Well, I just, I, I have had significant number of communications. It's, you know, they're all over the place, but some of them are like, I don't mind paying more to recycle because they're concerned about, you know, how much longer we have on the landfill and everything's going to go to the landfill. And I think they have the right, you know, we're all concerned about, you know, just keep loading up the landfill when some of this might be able to be recycled. I just don't know how to respond to them. So we've looked into it, but it's cost prohibitive.
It's, it's more costly and those haulers have the exact same problem we have, having enough people to do the collections.
Okay.
Now, two years ago, that might have made more sense, pre-COVID. But in today's world, there is, there's a problem everywhere. It's not just Bradenton. It's not just Manatee County. It's not just Florida.
Jim, I think if we, we've talked about it and the few people that have called me told them, this is going to be an evaluating situation over the next six months to a year. And this council will have the right to do whatever we want in two years from now. If we want to bring it back, if there's a means and a way to do it.
Because the other aspect to bear in mind is we're not selling trucks because we're not going to use it. We're, we'll have them available. So if the market changes and we're, we're able to reinstate something, absolutely, absolutely. We're, again, we want to grow recycle. And we think by cleaning it up and having it, having an opportunity to get out and do some education to the communities associated with this that I'll talk about, will only help and be, set us to be in a better position when things do change. Hopefully, they will. So this is, you know, this is a, an image of, of the type of container that we're talking about that would be out there. We've already gone ahead and pre-purchased ten of them when we put the order in. We hope that through the outreach program for the different communities, that when we're within weeks, that we'll be in a position to have to come back and say, we got to buy another ten or another twenty. Because we've already had conversations with some of the homeowners associations who are all on board with, hey, if you can put one in our development, we're happy to help. So that's part of our process. We're starting with ten. We're hoping it grows. So one of the things that you instructed us to do was to let you know about how we're going to go about reaching out to the communities. So initially, it's going to be a press release. If you pass the resolution, we have a press release prepared to go. And we will immediately start scheduling media interviews to get the information out. The red line version of the resolution that Mr. Perry spoke of, we'll be able to provide to you. We made very minor revisions to it. Basically, we removed, um, inclusion of palm fronds as part of anything that had to be bundled. We removed the provision that the bundles needed to be tied. We basically added a description of what a bundle is. Something six feet long and two feet high. Give us a chance to be able to attack it and pick it up. And also saying that we, this would begin implementation the first week in June. Those are the main changes to the resolution that you, you can be provided with afterwards. So we'll schedule those media. And we'll also start a process of doing red, red all calls, if you will, code red all calls. Not just one. They'll probably be on a regular basis to keep people reminding of, hey, it's coming, it's coming. Utility bill inserts. It's an effort. There are still people who might look at them, but that's not, we're not relying upon that as our only means of getting information out. Our city newsletter and our website will have information posted about this. We'll, we'll talk to the bishop about getting information put on the electronic sign that's on Ninth Street leading to the Green Bridge. And we'll also have an active social media campaign to get the information out and share with people. Another is putting wraps on our trucks. This is just a potential draft of one that we've been working with a local provider to put these wraps on the trucks to get that information out there about, and this is just one. We could have multiple different versions of this to talk about. But we got a rolling, we got rolling billboards going throughout the city on a regular basis and take that opportunity to provide that. Our HOA outreach, we're coordinating with PD, who has all of those regular HOA meetings. If this is passed, we will immediately start trying to schedule those meetings as soon as possible. We figure it's probably going to take a week or two for us to get those scheduled and start that process. But get that outreach going to all of these different communities to talk about it. And as part of that, we're going to use that as an opportunity to provide educational information about recycle as well. But also to explain to them why we're here. So that kind of information related to why we have a personnel problem, we're working with, uh, a, a local individual to help us work on some videos that we could be able to share and post on our YouTube page as well as on, on link on the website. But as part of those outreaches to those individual HOAs, we're going to want to have serious discussion with them about, hey, if you're, if you're really committed to recycle, and we hope you are because you're going to help us grow it, we want to help you by putting one as close as possible to you. And if we can put one in your community, help us figure out where we can do that on top of the ten that we're already starting with. And again, our hope is we will get positive feedback. And the initial feedback I've already gotten is positive to, hey, we would like one in our development. We'll work with them to figure out where the best places to put those are.
And Jim, I think one of those things is, and that's, I've talked to probably five HOAs and large ones, Ironwood, when people would call, your Riles, you know, all over the city. And they're all very interested in that, to keep the integrity of growing the recycling. And again, I think that's something that has been so positive, it's just talking to each individual to get it out there is that. And I think that, I know the chief, I think, walked out, but I know our police department goes quite often to these HOAs. And we would definitely use through that to, to make sure that we're getting the information out. So it's a, it's a collaborative thing throughout the city that's going to be a win-win.
And again, it's an opportunity to provide information and kind of, I mean, it's so easy for misinformation to get out. I'll, I'll use the example of Ms. Whedon, who was here this morning, talking about that there's going to be sidewalk on Second Street that's going to take out a tree and that we're going to have music in the... That's, that's just a rumor that somebody started for you and that's not true. So that type of information about recycle and yard waste in general too are, is something we hope to be able to tackle as we talk to the individual homeowner associations. Again, working on some videos, I want to try and take that image of Mr. Cho, maybe not use Mr. Cho as part of it, but to kind of animate that as something that kind of, in a short burst, explains why we're in the situation we're in and why we're doing what we're doing. But also, as part of that, instructional videos, you know? Polly pizza box, trying to put it into the, into the container, no. Right? Those types of things in informational video, short bursts that, that can be provided and help educate you. As well, including the procedures to follow as it relates to recycle. Including, as part of our presentations, site maps, addresses, locations where these centralized containers are, photographs of them once we get them put out, so that people can see what, where am I going? We don't want people having to search and hunt and seek for these. Sorry about that. Wrong button. So again, we would have location maps with links so that you can click on any of these and have it come up and show you, show you the location. We're going to make, make it as informative as possible. And again, we hope that the blue dots that we have on here multiply twofold, threefold, as we expand the program. So again, our intent is, through that process, to repurpose our recycle bins to yard waste-only bins with stickers that would be put on the containers. We'll, we'll be doing that in the field as we collect them, basically. Okay? And we've had some other communities who are, like, if we put a container, I believe it was Ironwood asked the question. If we want to put a container out there for their recycle, though, well, we've got like twenty blue cans. We'll come get them. Don't worry. If you, if you're not going to use them for that purpose, we'll come get them.
And I think also that if a resident wants two yard waste and we have all those extras, because it would make it easier for our drivers to pick them up then.
And that's, that's really what this is about, is trying to make it as, so imagine you're, you're, you're one of those two-person trucks. We got two of them out there collecting yard waste. If, if they roll up and it's able to pick up three cans and tip them into the bag or pick up bags and tip them into the bag or small piles and throw them in the, that's much faster than attacking some of these piles. I mean, I could show you a video I've got here of, of how bad it used to be. That just, it, it's...
Well, I did have a question. Yeah, but I didn't mean to interrupt him.
No, that's okay. Go right ahead.
No, I was just wondering, I'm just thinking of the logistics. So you collect all your recycling materials to take them to the, um, community drop? I mean, I'm concerned about what do you put them in to get them there? You know, people are going to put them in trash bags, which will make it a problem. So are we gonna, I mean, how, how, what's the expectation of how people are going to get it to that?
Well, there's, we used to have small containers that people have been using for little tubs.
So are we going to provide something like that again or...
If, if need be... If, if need be, we can look at doing that as, as an expansion of the program.
I just see the trash bag being a problem.
Well, I think though, but they're not gonna be able just to throw the trash bag in, because it's a smaller opening. And technically, one of the gentlemen sent to me saying that, "Well, then I'm gonna have Coke cans and milk bottles and all that spilling all over my car." But technically, they're supposed to rinse them out and dry them before they put them in the recycle anyway, to make it clean recycling. So, when I told him that, he was like, "Oh." And then I said, "On top of your bin, you read it," and he goes, "Oh." He goes, "My wife and I put it in the plastic bag and tie it up every time." So, I said, "Basically, 100% of what you're doing is contaminated." "Oh." So, and it, real nice conversation. He was just, "Oh." So, that's again, but it's right on top of their bin of how to do it, and we're still missing a little bit of it. So, again, that's why we think this could grow recycling.
Oh, you and I were walking out of the building one day, and I went to throw a glass, or a plastic bottle, and I opened the recycle thing, and, and we have people here thinking they're recycling, and they're putting things in plastic bags and throwing it in there, and that contaminates it. So, even, even we here aren't following what we're supposed to be doing. And it, I, it must frustrate you gentlemen greatly.
Well, it's frustrating because it feels like an exercise in futility, really. I mean, you're expending manpower, effort, gasoline, uh, diesel, excuse me, not gasoline. All of that effort to just know, "Oh, God, this is just, oh, this is so sad." And we're hopeful that through this process, we can clean that up. And again, grow recycle, a clean recycle program. And should the market shift, we hope to have a better educated public ready to go.
You know, Jim, on that note, uh, 'cause I remember when this happened. You know, we have been trying to educate. This is, this is not the first time we've talked about that recycling isn't working. I remember back in 2017, there was, you know, we were getting warning signs that China was gonna stop taking our recycling material. And on January 1st of 2018, the first day of that year, it got cut off. Well, that's the day recycling in America failed. Because we did, we couldn't ship it to China anymore. But we probably shouldn't have been doing that anyway, as, as, you know, inhabitants of the earth.
The plastics floating in the sea that is an island bigger than some states.
Rhode Island, yeah.
Yeah, so.
But, 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 but we have spent, I, I remember, this has come up many times of it, where the people are not recycling. They're not, we have, we, we went out with the new bins, 'cause we used to have the old, the old bins with the four buckets, and we went to the bigger bins and all that, and right on top of it.
With a single string.
Right, right on top of it. Every single, you know, um, this is what you put in, this is what you don't. And it's like, might as well not even be there. So, so, and that's, and that's okay. That's just the way humans are. But this is, this is something that we have been trying to figure out, how to educate the public, since 2018. And it's not working, so we have to try something else.
And there, and there are plenty of communities, including Manatee County, that spend a lot of money on marketing or, and, and trying to educate through public service announcements and things of that nature. The unfortunate aspect is, I, I put it this way. If we went out and, and said, "We're gonna keep collecting curbside the way we've been doing, and we're gonna just start educating people." If, if we got 80% compliance, that's still 20% that contaminates it. And when it goes to the recycle facility, that 80% gets mixed with that 20%, and maybe the 50% from some other community that ends up going to the landfill anyways. And to be clear, we're not the ones directing it to the landfill. So, again, through all of that, what we're hopeful for is that we get less contamination of recycling. We grow recycling. We get the ability to better allocate our staffs. Again, we know that yard waste is a major concern and a major waste stream. The reality is, yard waste is actually recycled. That material goes to the facility in Sarasota, a separate facility. We pay $39.50 a ton to take that material there for them to mulch it up.
And it's 100% recycled.
I'm not gonna say it's 100%, but it's probably pretty close.
But if, because even the contamination, don't they burn it?
Oh, yeah, so.
As long, I mean, as long as it's truly yard waste, you know?
And not a couch, or?
Right. My trash buddy and I had to pick through stuff to throw out, construction waste that was in a yard waste pile, so.
And realistically, that's part of the education process too, that we hope through these homeowners. Separate from recyclers, to talk to them about, "Come on, give our guys a chance. Separate the stuff out so that, that we can attack it." 'Cause it's, it's hard work for these guys, and it's thankless to them, unfortunately. And the majority of time, people aren't aware of what they're asking people to, to do. So, we hope we can get that education as part of these outreaches as well. And provide more consistencies, 'cause again, our garbage folks praise to no end from the citizens. So, again, all we're hoping towards is to get more consistency and be able to better serve the community and grow recycle in the long run.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. McCollin, I think all of us up here might have gotten someone asking, "Could we, or should we, or have we looked at just doing garbage pickup once a week?" Now, for my household, that would be a disaster, 'cause I have four people in my household. Could you speak to that? I know we've, over the years, we've gone back and forth, and we've talked about once-a-week pickup. Personally, I would be against that, because A, it's Florida; B, it gets really hot; C, garbage gets really stinky; and D, you end up attracting rats, rodents, possums, raccoons, snakes, you name it, they show up.
Well, I think, simplistically put, if you do it once a week, you're still collecting the same volume, okay? That same volume now fills the truck twice as fast, so there's more trips to the landfill on that day that you're collecting. I think it's a net wash in terms of any-
It would not save us money.
I don't see it that way, no.
And it would create other issues for a large percentage of the citizens. All right, any other questions, or, I would like to open this up, though, to some citizen comment, so we can hear from citizens. I do have one card on Ron Kabicki, I believe it is. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Ron Kabicki, living in Brainingham, Florida, 3608 67th Street West. And trash is the name. I don't know what happened. He was talking. We did all these audits. We pay a certain amount of money for a certain service. In the last two years, we haven't gotten that at all. Now, recycle worked. Everything was working. Where did it go wrong? We got big cans. I have friends that live over on the other side, on the east side, and I go over there. They took the green cans away and put blue ones there and said, "Put all your garbage in the blue ones." There's a lot of stuff going on. You, you just put these containers to get trash, yard trash. Cordova Lakes is where I live. There's a piece of concrete in there. They back this big dumpster in there. Monday, it's empty. Tuesday, it's full. Commercial people dropping off all their stuff in there. We can't even use it. I was there yesterday. There's a truck parked next to it that's torn up. There's a boat over here. It looks like a junkyard. That's what's going on. Waste management is not doing their job. They don't have the equipment. We were doing fine until Lakewood Ranch come along, if you remember. It's growth. They gotta grow too. They gotta spend money. They gotta buy equipment. They can't hire people. That ain't what, I talk to employees, that ain't what they're saying. They don't have the equipment. They can't keep up with this. There's a lot more to all this than just what you're hearing from waste management. And people are not gonna, like, right now, they put that container for yard waste. People gonna put trees and stuff in their car and take over there to dump in that thing? No. All the commercial boys are. I called sanitation department here a month ago, or two months ago. Told them about it. The little girl answered the phone. "Oh, no, they can do it. They can use it. That's public." I said, "They're commercial?" "No, that's fine." Well, they went over and they put a sign on there for commercial use. What good did that do? You know, it's, I don't know. There's a lot more mess than what's going on right now. And we're not getting our money's worth in the first place. For two years now, we have given up. Waste management is still getting their contract money every month, paying a certain amount. They're getting all theirs. They never took a hit on anything.
All right, well, I was just gonna say, waste management is the county, we're the city, so we have our own garbage department. And we're talking about recycling is the most part to, to adjust. So, doesn't have to do with the, the yard waste as much.
Recycling worked at one time, until they put these big cans in there, and people just using them and covering. They had trucks that come around, and a guy was driving, and a guy, one guy did it. Draw, stopped, picked up, and put the stuff in the recycle bins. There was no problems. And then they put these big blue cans out there, and that's when the problems started.
Right, well, that waste management, or, the county also has the blue bins for recycling, so it might be confused with what the city's doing now, so.
Yeah.
But all right, well, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Waste management picks up for the county and for the city.
No, no, they only pick up from the county.
We have city employees.
Yeah, we have our own garbage department. Waste, if you're, if you're getting picked up by waste management, that's the county.
I live in Cordova Lakes. Right next, we are completely surrounded by county property. And the same garbage trucks that are picking up, my garbage is picking up their garbage.
Not if you're the city one, so it'd be, we would have our own trucks. You may have the same water, but you might, you don't have the same pickups.
Well.
But, all right, well, thank you, though, for your comments.
You need to go out and take a look. Thank you.
I have no other cards, so is there anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Amendment, I'll circulate. I apologize, we were working on this till about 11 o'clock last night. I do apologize when I got in earlier.
Thank you. Thank you.
You did that just for me, then? And you're just trying to push my button, man.
Just a brief reference to the specific area of the, of the resolution on the amendment is going to be, specifically, Section 1B, as it goes to definition, and particularly subsection 3. Loose branches and limbs excluding palm fronds must be bundled and neat piled to no more than six feet in length and two feet in height for collection. What that reflects is that we have removed the requirement of having tied piles, basically. And also, of course, excluded palm fronds, because palm fronds grow longer than six feet fairly frequently. And we know that's the official plant of Tampa Bay, basically, so.
So, when you, when you, you've got bundling, if we remove tied, so bundling just means stacking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, we would like somewhat of a neat pile.
And I think, I think most homeowners do that anyway.
They do.
That's, that's traditionally what's been going on. It's just a-
You know, the big takeaway from this is that I, I think we're gonna be able to reallocate our resources to, to things like yard waste and bulk waste. And it comes down to, do you wanna do, you know, four things marginally, or do you wanna do three things well? That's kind of the way I see it.
Ma'am?
Yeah, I'm, maybe my copy isn't correct.
Sorry?
Um, under B, 1B.
Yes, ma'am.
Where it gets to the little I, the last part of it says, "Blue gallon cans bagged or in neat bundles that are tied to facilitate collection." Are we?
Actually, it's kinda strange, 'cause my copy doesn't say that.
It says tied here.
It doesn't mine.
I'm, I'm on section, on subsection B, yeah.
Next time when you're-
I had all my shots. I don't bite.
When they get angry, Snickers won't work.
I, look, I, look, you got, you got candy and cookies down there. I'm just saying.
Yeah, you cleaned up, you cleaned up three.
Page two. Are you on page two?
And you said that you weren't gonna vote for anything you saw right off the cuff, like, so what do you care?
Would you just be nice today?
I was.
I, I, I suggest, basically, that we, we maybe make a, a, a voice amendment to, to make that consistent with Section 3. Probably the procedural way to address that.
And I think this is, is a good way. I know there's been angst back and forth on it, but when we've gone out to collect those on the Saturdays, and if you see that pile, it's a little bit more, as a person pulls up to it, you see a little bit where you can grab and put it in. It's when you walk up and the thing's 10 foot tall, there's a stump the size of two huge men together, 12 foot long, and they expect you to take it.
Right.
You know, so that's, you know, it's, again, it makes it feasible for, and still keeps within the friendly city. So, everything in there is, was taken out except for that tide, so cross through that tide.
Yeah, what the Marion, there's an oar in deep on the-
Okay, okay, well, but I, I think, I think-
Or neat bundles.
I think we need to be consistent, and if we are going to say that we're not gonna require people to tie up their yard waste, it needs to be consistent through the whole thing.
I agree.
'Cause I don't want anybody to go, "What are you trying to pull here?"
So, just maybe in the sentence, add bundles.
Or in neat bundles, period.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or you could leave in, "To facilitate collection." Maybe just remove.
I would, I would suggest just removing the "that are tied."
That are tied.
That are tied, right.
Okay.
Right.
I just want to be consistent.
I agree.
And I did get, yes, and I did get phone calls from people that were saying, "Why are you telling me I'm gonna have to gift wrap my yard waste?"
Right.
I don't think we're asking anyone to gift wrap. I think we're, we're saying, "We've got, we need everybody helping us to keep our city looking clean and nice the way that, that, that you want your city, and that I want our city to look." And to have just a little compassion for the people that are gonna be doing this job. Because while I did it in January and in February.
You're not done.
I may not be done, but I really felt for our gentlemen that have to do it in June, July, August, and September, when it's 100 degrees and 90% humidity. I mean, that's, that's, that's a job, people. I mean, that's really hard, hard work.
All right. Yes, ma'am?
You know, another thing, and have, this is just so fresh for me, because I have just gone through a move, is a lot of times, it's when you're moving, and how do you get rid of all of it? I mean, I don't know that people know enough about being able to call-
You mean garbage, not?
Well, just in general, when you move, it's-
It's in the-
It is in here. Where is that?
It's in the documents, that basically you call for a pickup. That we're basically trying to change it to where, you know, if you have, you know, I'll be buying a bed in the, in the future. I'll have to put my old bed out. I'll call and let them know, you know, the one I want it picked up, and I'll pay, what, the 10 bucks gladly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And for those individuals that have rental properties, and a tenant leaves, and you put everything at the curb, that's called the cost of doing business.
Right. And that's, and these are the, these are the issues that we're really addressing, where we've recognized. They've, they've been around for a long time. We just haven't had, we haven't had to deal with them up till now.
And just for reference, Mayor Council, this is from a curbside recycling site, basically. You can see on our illustrator that we're really not plowing new ground. Clay County, Florida, Davie, and my focus is pretty bad. But as we go through there, Deerfield Beach, Deltona, Jacksonville, Lady Lake, Margate, Mount Door, Pembroke Pines, one of our neighbors in the area, and the associated reasons are-
And the associated reasons are cost, contamination, staff shortage, pandemic, things like that.
And they've eliminated it, though.
They've entirely eliminated it, right. We're trying to grow, we're trying to make it better.
The villages, Wildwood, the villages, huge.
I was surprised because folks in the villages probably would be very, would typically fit a demographic of very high recycle, clean recycle.
I, I pulled this, I pulled this list up from another source, Waste Dive, which is a, you know, this, this is, this is a big issue. And, and, and by the way, the list goes all the way in every, every state.
Hundreds.
Absolutely. Every state in the Union's dealing with the same thing.
I'll make a statement. I hope that we get a 5-0 vote here because I don't want to politicize this. I think it's, I've been preaching this for a long time and many of this was some of my suggestions, so I know it's, it's hard to make change, but this is, this is good. And I'm, I'm wanting, I'd like to have my comrades to all buy in. And if something doesn't work, we can always change it, but I, I think this will be good for us.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that motion, yes, yeah, well, yeah.
I second that.
With the, with the elimination of the tie, because I had that before. That's a pain and you know, and what matters to is nobody will tie them. And then, I mean, it could be much worse. In other communities, they make, you put stickers on them, you gotta call first. He's like, I don't even know all the rules, so what happens is you just don't do it. And then it becomes a problem, then you get a fire pit in your backyard, you start burning it.
So we have a motion in a second with the...
If I could clarify, that's a motion to approve with the changes as shown on the, on the version that was handed out, and then also the additional deletion of the language related to tying.
That are tied, correct.
Right, correct.
So we have a motion by Mr. Sanders, a second by Mr. Roth, and discussion, Mr. Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I, I agree. I, so I just wanna, I, I've looked at this, well, since 2018, this system's been failing. And, and we've just been trying to make a system work that doesn't work. And we stubbornly keep trying to make the system work that doesn't work, and now we're at the point of a crisis. So basically, we've got, we've got two problems on our hands. COVID has exposed our, our worldwide labor shortage, or at least nationwide labor shortage. And, and we're experiencing that just like everyone else. So, and, and, and what we're doing is not, we can't do it all anymore. We tried and we're gonna, we're gonna continue. And the other thing that we're, we're doing is, is that the, the recycling in America is dysfunctional. It ceased to work when China pulled out in January 2018. So I have some stats here on that. And then the other thing I wanted to say too is, my goal for this has always been that, that, you know, one of the things that Bradenton's always been known for, that the people are very proud of and love, is that, you know, that we pick up the yard waste, to pick up the trash, because they know that in the county, you know, they've got to gift wrap everything. And, and they don't want, you know, so they've always appreciated what we do. Now, over time, people have abused that, and we're gonna deal with that. We have a new document that deals with everything, that's fine. So I just wanted to focus on that we have one thing that we're doing, well, the word in, in the vocation today was excellence. In the past, we've had excellence in our, in our, in our ability to pick up all solid waste, until there was a labor shortage. And then the one thing that we always have that we know, because I've heard it and so have you from the citizens, is we have excellence in our ability to pick up yard waste, which is, if it's not 100% recyclable, it's pretty darn close, so. So, we know that we can do that well, we know that it's proper, we know that it's the right thing to do, it's not a waste of energy. So I just wanted to go through some stuff, because I'd, I'd gone on and looked at some of the things that Mr. Perry did too, that, where we are in, in recycling. With plastics this year, 8.7% or 3 million tons of all plastics that recycled, of, of, of the 27 million tons that were recycled, only three, 8.7% of 3 million actually were recycled. The rest aren't being recycled. Estimates from a U.S. Environmental Agency says that less than 10% of plastics that have been thrown into bins over the last 40 years have actually been recycled. In the USA, single stream, single strain, which we converted to, is easier on the consumer, but it's far more easy to contaminate. And then the quote on that is, it just doesn't work, it doesn't help, but it feels good. So that's not helping anyone. 2020 Greenpeace reported that many products that are labeled recycled, plastic products, they're, they're, they're not recyclable. It's false advertising. So, and then, and in getting into, well, what can we do? One of the most recyclable items out there is aluminum. 75% of all aluminum ever produced is still being used. It's, it's really recyclable. It takes 90% less energy to recycle aluminum than it does to mine it, and, and so that's why we're using it. So there's things that we can do that work better than what we're doing. Single stream needs to be gotten away with nationwide. It's, it's, it's a false product. It does not work. And then we can focus in on, and, and I hope that this country does get its recycling together. I mean, we should, we need to. It's, it's the proper thing to do. Now, when this city faced the recession of 2008, we ran right up through, it was probably 14 or 15 by the time we actually climbed out of it. We, we had a crisis on our hands, and we, we got through it. You know, it, it hurt, it was long and serious. I think this will ha, I think we'll get back to, I think we'll get back to on, on our footings quicker than this. I think the labor market will justify itself. It will, it will correct itself in some point in time. I, I don't know how long it'll take, probably a few years. I've heard calculations that we're looking at an economy that's gonna struggle for the next few years, and then things will stabilize. And when it does, you know, maybe either the recycling we're doing now works great, or we can come back and do it better, so we can always fix something. But, you know, right now, this just isn't working, and, and, you know, the rainy season is coming. I mean, the reason we're caught up right now is it stopped raining last September. And although things are green, they're not growing. I'm, I'm an arborist. Just because they stay green doesn't mean they're growing. They're in a semi-dormant state. Once these rains start up in late May and June, it's gonna be poof. And people are gonna do what we do in Bradenton. We like to keep our, our yards clean. We like to, you know, keep things trimmed up, and we put it out and the city hauls it away, and, and, and that'll happen. And by the way, I could tell you this too, from having, having worked in the field of arboriculture and horticulture in this yard, in this town for 20 years, a lot of the stuff that goes out there is just shrubbery. I mean, we talk about tree limbs like they're everything because they're the most noticeable, but most people that are, that are actually taking care of their yards are, that stuff's gonna fit in those blue bins, and it's actually gonna be easier on people. And, and they're not, they'll, they'll come to appreciate it and use it. And, and this, this will solve the immediate problem. We have, we have an immediate crisis. It's not working. This will fix it. I am sure of that, I am positive of it. And, and, and we'll get down and, and, you know, focus in on, on the bigger issue of how America is gonna do a better job of, of recycling, including, we need to get our, our, our producers to stop, you know, making stuff that can't be dealt with. I mean, if, if, if plastic is not recyclable and you're stamping it that it is, well, that should be criminal. So we can get there, and, and all the cardboard that's coming in from, it freaks me out. I mean, my wife's a shopper, and, you know, an online shopper, and I see all this cardboard coming in, it's like, you know, that needs to be processed properly, or, or another way of shipping it, anyway.
Thank you. Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had a problem for some time now. And I think we've forgotten what it was like during the pandemic when coming to work to pick up trash, or coming to work to be able to, to do emergency services, or coming to work to keep people safe as the police do. I think we've forgotten, that was a death-defying act. I mean, initially, we did not know what was causing the coronavirus. And we have had individuals that have worked very hard for us under some very difficult circumstances. And while, Mr. Sanders, yes, you are right. I've said that don't hand me something in a meeting and expect me to vote for it. However...
I listened to you.
Yes, I appreciate that so much. I've had numerous conversations in the past two weeks with Mr. Perry, with Mr. Cho, with Mr. McClellan, as this document was, was getting wordsmithed and corrected, and there was, you know, they, they listened to what we were listening to from the citizens and are trying to do as much with what we can do. And I just want to say how much I appreciate the effort that's gone into this. I know it's not been easy. I know we're gonna get criticized for this, but if you don't want to be criticized, don't get out of bed in the morning, and then they'll criticize you for being lazy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So on that, we'll start the vote in Ward 1.
Oh, you're kidding.
The order of it.
5-0.
Please, let's have some decorum, let's have some decorum, that's not...
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
Carries 5 to 0, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
All right, moving on to council reports, we'll start in Ward 5. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, I write a lot that I'm gonna say, but in the sake of time. For all the staff that this week took the time to put together some information for me, thank you. When I ran for election, I was always asked this uncomfortable question, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? And I'm like, I don't have a crystal ball, and I'm not the only one, you know? And now, being elected, now I get, what have you done? What have you done? Again, it's uncomfortable because I don't do it by myself, you know? It's members here on the dais and an excellent staff, various departments, new and some have been around for a while. So I just wanted to say thank you to you. And I won't belabor, talking about the comments from the public about solid waste, but I would like to give a, a thank you to what will happen. And that's, that Chief Bevan has graciously agreed to speak to some citizens that have been calling me throughout the months. They're very, very afraid, and they want to talk to the chief so that they can get an understanding of how the, you know, public safety can come into play in that, in our neighborhood, so. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's pretty much all I'm gonna say today.
Thank you, Ms. Coachman. Ms. Coker?
Yeah, not a lot, just mostly, I, I wanna just thank all the citizens that reached out to me, and there were a lot. I think my ward especially has, has a lot of feelings about this, and I, and I think that there's gonna be a lot that are gonna be disappointed in our vote today, and it was a difficult decision for me, to be honest. And, but I feel like we can't keep going like we are, and let's, let's, hopefully this'll work. I'm taking everyone at their word that we're gonna try to get to a better recycling program. And I hope that, you know, I just want to thank everyone for reaching out, and it's good to hear from you and know your feelings and know that they are taken to heart. So I, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to echo how much I appreciate when citizens take the time to contact me, either by telephone call, or email, or when you see me at the grocery store. It, it, it is helpful to have input from so many different sources and to try to blend that together to come to a consensus that will work for our community. So I, I wanted to thank the citizens for reaching out to me. I also want to thank Mrs. Brown for making our ribbons today in support of the ongoing troubles in Ukraine. And I, I think that was very kind of her, and I, I want to thank her for that. I would like to thank the, the CCRA Advisory Committee for reaching out and asking each of us to take a time to, to meet with them at one of their regular meetings. That, my meeting was last night. I think it was very informative. I learned a lot. I want to thank Mr. McClellan. I also want to thank Ms. Clayback for attending. They did an excellent job sharing with what we are hoping to be able to do with grants that we might receive, and what, how, how citizens can have input into what is going on in their community. And I, I appreciate, I was very impressed with Ms. Clayback and, and the way that she did her presentation, and please share that with her. I also wanted to say congratulations to Coach Eddie Shan. Long time coming. Really appreciate that. And since everybody's been so nice today, I have an Irish joke for you. Patty goes into the bar and he says to the barkeep, give me, give me a Guinness. And the barkeep says, well, Patty, what's, what's wrong? And he says, ugh, I had a fight with me woman, I did, with my wife. And the barkeep goes, ugh, Patty, you married a stiff-necked woman, you did. And Patty goes, aye, I did, I married a stiff-necked woman, but let me tell you, this time, this time, she came crawling up to me on her hands and knees, she did. And the barkeep said, oh, Patty, you'd be telling something now. And he says, oh, me mother's grave. That woman came crawling up to me on my hands, her hands and knees, she did. And the barkeep said, well, Patty, whatever did she say? And Patty said, she said, come out from under that bed and fight like a man. Happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone. Oh, and I have glasses for the council.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Barnaby, for the decorations and, and making us the St. Patty's Day celebration here, so thank you, and snacks.
And, and the breakfast cookie.
Yeah, breakfast cookie. Mr. Roth?
Thank you. I have one item. I wanted to bring, I brought this up a while ago, I was saying probably a year, two years ago. I've, I've served on the Minnesota League of Cities. Tell you, my first year, I think it was the year 2006, I, I was very active. I got very involved with the League of Cities. I went to the EMU classes first thing in March. And, and basically, I just really loved it, and I, I started attending all their functions and everything like that. And I was approached by Barbara Gross, who was the mayor of Northport, and the president of the Minnesota League of Cities, and said that the previous person that had the slot was not coming to any meetings. Previous councilman in Ward 4. And, and she said, would you start attending the meetings because we're not having anyone from Bradenton coming? And I said, sure, you know, but let me, let me check that. So I contacted that person and, and asked him, I said, you, you interested in keeping that? He said, no. And I said, okay, well, you have any problem with me doing it? I said, no. So I just basically did it ever since. And I have been trying to wind down on a few things, and this, this is one of them. I mentioned this a long time ago, that I was looking for a replacement for the Minnesota League. And then, so I told, I had, there was a person on the board that I knew that had been attending some league stuff, and I, I thought it was the same, the same format as when I assumed it. And they were interested, but then the league has said that, and I remember this, we rewrote, we rewrote our bylaws. We had a problem with, we were meeting in Sarasota, and we had some issues with the clerk there. And, and we basically packed everything up and hauled it out to Longbow Key, and we've been doing stuff. And we rewrote the bylaws. So basically, what they're saying is that there needs to be a, a vote from the city that, of the, who the new Minnesota League member is gonna be. And the meeting is Thursday.
And that's on my list because I did talk with Brian Williams about asking, and I said I hadn't heard anything from you as far as saying right or wrong, so I wanted to bring that up today when I was gonna start the talk.
Right.
All right, so what you're asking then is for a volunteer and then a confirmation by this council?
So they can attend the meeting tomorrow? So they can attend the meeting tomorrow.
Right.
It meets at Longbow Key on Thursday mornings. Takes about an hour to get out there, an hour to get back, and a couple hours for a meeting.
Two hours during spring break.
So it's a half a day commitment.
Well, we use the city plane, helicopter.
Helicopter. All the goings.
That's in the capital, approved by them. That's the amendment, the amendment.
That's in the red line.
I'd be glad to volunteer for that because I'm already meeting with them, or I have in Tallahassee for the...
Anybody else have an interest? Hearing none. Saw that pretty quick. So do we have to have a vote on that or is it just a confirmation?
I'll move that we appoint Mr. Sanders to the Minnesota League of Cities.
And I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three?
Yep.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Enjoy the drive.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Roth? You said one thing, so is that it?
No, I was going to say, there's a couple of points in the drive where it's actually pretty, when you're not waiting in line on a crooked bridge.
All right. All right, Mr. Sanders?
I'm glad that we had this vote the way it was with the recycling because it's been something that's annoyed me for, since I've been here. And because, it didn't annoy me, I appreciated it because it was so lucid of policy that I couldn't believe we was doing it that way. And I told that to Mr. McClellan years ago. I said, "I don't know how you can keep up with what you're doing as easy as you're doing it." So I'm just, if it doesn't work, I'll be the first one to get up here and say, "We got to change it back," or something like that. You know that. And so I think that this is something that had to be happening. I didn't try to be too influential in saying five oh, what? I know it puts pressure on, but the deal is this, if we're not all on board and accept it and try to make it work, it won't work. And so I like the votes that everybody says yes to because it makes it easy that you can't say, "Well, I didn't vote for that, so call the mayor." So anyway, that number one made me happy. We're going to have an Earth Day in, well, you know we're building a new park over in Iowa, in Mineral Springs, and the new park, and we're going to have an Earth Day there in April, I think to April 23rd, at Reflections to do some cleanup there. And so that's going to, we'll need volunteers, and it's not approved yet, but we've talked about it, logistics of when that will happen. So that, I would like to have everybody to turn out for that because we're trying to clean that neighborhood up, and code enforcement's done a wonderful job. Still a lot to go, but we have done a wonderful job, so I'd like to somehow get that promoted.
What was the date?
I think April 23rd.
Jennifer's going to get stuff out to all of us from Keep Manatee Beautiful.
Right. So that, and my focus, I think for the rest of this year at least, is going to be affordable housing. And I know everybody says that because it's a buzzword, has been a buzzword for politicians forever. And I think that I'd like to make it more than just a buzzword. I'd like to make some reality of it. I met last week with one of the county commissioners, Mr. Cruz. I met with the school board chairman, Mr. Kennedy, to about, to waivers of impact fees for true affordable housing and some other things we can do with infill stuff or excess properties and maybe a land trust to put properties into so that, because they got more money than we got, obviously. So if we do that, then somebody can start building these affordable houses for the people or for the land trust, maybe even somehow rent it. I don't know all the details to get that pretty soon. So that's something we may want to talk about on the agenda for...
It's already on there.
It's already on there, okay. By the way, are we going to have that, are you going to present that or something to us soon?
Yeah, seven days before. They always do, the county always does their seven days before of the workshops.
Oh, gosh.
That's already part of it.
Do you guys hear that?
What?
The workshop.
They always present stuff seven days before?
On the workshops.
Okay. I think Robin for her ability to put up with me on this comprehensive plan because I know I was probably hard on you, but it wasn't you, it was because it wasn't getting done. It wasn't getting done before you got here, and I thought, this is going to slip away if I don't, you know, beat my chest up here. And so that's what I did. So if that offended you, I'm sorry. I said it to you privately, I'm not saying it to you publicly. Your presentation was good, I accept it. It's a long-term thing, but it's a vision for our city, and I want everybody to have input into it, you know, not just my idea, it's our, our, O-U-R, idea. So I appreciate your diligence and putting up with my behavior. So one thing I'd like to ask of Mr. Perry, and this will be my last item. I would like to see, and if nobody wants it, that's fine. I'd like to see a mid-year line item budget of where we're at. And I know we spoke about this, and I think, you know, mid-year is nothing too hard, so that's given you plenty of time because we won't have that till probably April. And then that gives us a good lead in to the budget year in September. So where are we at and where we aren't compared to last year? Now, you can do the same comparison for the same six-month period, or you can do just a nine thirty line item. Of course, it wouldn't be comparative because it's a full year versus a half year. But I'd like to see where we're at in expenditures from the half of this fiscal year, if that's possible. Probably have that by maybe the first of May. Your year-end won't end, your half year, six months, won't be here till first of March. So it gives you 30 days, something to work on it, present it. If any of the council doesn't want it, I know it's a lot of paperwork, but you should be, probably should have that anyway. If you don't have that, that would be another thing I'd like to discuss with you because those things need to be monitored regularly. And so half a year is, and it's a good lead in to the rest of the budget year as to what we expect to do between now and September 30th.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Mr. Perry, and I think it's a good idea to bring information. The information is there, but it's how you get it out, and I think that's good.
Yeah, I've already talked with Linda Guth about it, like, two months ago, about, I had the same thoughts. Don't review these things throughout the fiscal year for updates, and I think presenting it to council at the midway point is a great suggestion, so I'll try to get the information together.
Thank you.
Some of it's seasonal and some of it works.
Yeah, I understand, and we don't have to go through everything, but the major departments is what we're talking about, police, fire, and public works.
Absolutely.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, on that note, back in the early days of the recession until we got into it, I mean, it lasted way too long for municipalities because we were first in and last out. We actually started several years, we would start our budget session in May, you know, just to, because we didn't, we were in crisis, so.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you.
Just a couple things, and I'll kind of reflect. The MPO, we had our meeting last week, and Mr. Sanders and I are the representatives on that board. Talked about a lot of good things, obviously, some water taxi, which will be something I think will be big for our city and bringing people and hopefully doing some transportation issues off of that. But I did ask Dave Hutchinson at some point to get with Mr. Perry and then maybe come and give us a presentation on some of the traffic issues and things that we'll be dealing directly in the city. So, you know, look forward to that. As far as last night, I did attend the CCRA meeting, which I'd been to many before, the way the boards were and the way that things had changed. I thought that was great, that we still have an interest. And I know our other boards, I don't think have really active boards anymore, but the CCRA is still meeting, so I appreciated that board and hearing what they had to say in the presentation, obviously. Jim and Kim did a great job, and it was good information for them. And it's also told about how government can get some free money and do some good things for a neighborhood if the grants will come through and some of those. So that was good to hear that we're working that. Obviously, yesterday morning, went to see Coach Shan and honored at the county commission meeting, 100 years old. I've known him for more than 30 years with my involvement at Manatee High School and with the football program and what that man has done for the youth and the greatness of our community through a lot of tough times and how he stayed. And to be 100 years old and, you know, still have that same desire to help and do that, and it's an honor that the county did name that park after him and what the park's going to be for their community and that over all the years. Saturday, Mrs. Barnaby and I, with others, were out with the Bradenton-Palmato Challenge with Keep Manatee Beautiful. And we had a few more people, so I think that, or we had more trash in our area. So the Riverwalkers that we hear a lot about, that is two gentlemen that do a lot for the Riverwalk area, and they have a plan, and they're picking up trash all the time. But they were out, and we had about 60 people on the Bradenton side, 40 people on the Palmetto side. But those challenges are always great because it helps energize people in your community. And we did happen to mention to some about recycling and how that might work, but just to keep working through, and Keep Manatee Beautiful does a great job for the whole county. But we're glad that they're in our city and other things are going to be coming. So Jennifer and that group, you know, is working. I know that something, talking about Keep Manatee Beautiful, the way that works is the tree board is a process we're going through, trying to re-energize that and starting to get names of people now to work on that, and that's something that we're, it's going to be an ebb and flow. And we should have never lost that, but it is what it is. We got to move forward now and get it back to where we are. Affordable housing, and it's something on our March 24th meeting, talking with county commissioners and going through, as well as our comp plan and some things that we can work together. Because I think there's going to be some opportunity through our CIP plan to maybe help speed up some of those things through affordable housing. Because I was talking with a person last night, and we're doing a great job in the city, 199, 80, 133. But we need 2,000, 3,000, 5,000. So how can we, as governments working together, spark that? You know, and it's not going to happen overnight, but we need it overnight. So it's something that, and in this meeting with the county, we know working together, we can get more. And it is about our, because this is our town. It's theirs and ours, let's work together to make it a productive thing. And then, I think this is the last thing, and she's going to kill me, but Friday is my wife's 55th birthday, so double nickels, so we're telling it. Sometimes she gets a little emotional, and I usually don't bring up personal stuff up here, but that's a celebration that we have, and, you know, you got to, life is too short. You know, we all see it through COVID and different things with some of the younger people that passed because of different things. Another 55-year-old standing up in the back now.
Uh-oh. You're not going to make that up, man. Really?
She stood up, but anyway. So that's, just to say, happy birthday to my wife, and thank you for going through the things with that. And also, Ms. Barnaby, happy birthday this month, and Mr. Perry, happy birthday this month, and Ms. Robin, happy birthday this month, so I miss some others. This is a busy month, so we appreciate everybody, and everybody else. I forgot somebody, I'm sure, that might be in this room, but everybody else that's here, thank you for what you do, and happy St. Patrick's Day, and let's keep moving forward. And I like some statements that were made today. Sometime it is about working as a team and being together, even though we may have differences. We still sometimes, you know, and a four-one vote isn't something that kills something or three to two, but it's about working together, and sometimes those votes are that way, and it's okay. So thank you, and five o's are good. So you want to go with, let's go with Chief, and then Mr. Perry can close this out if nobody else has anything. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, for pointing out my age.
Yeah, really.
But I will say this, speaking of milestones, and sometimes it's about perspective and where people are and what's on their minds. 21 years ago tomorrow, I was in the city of Kiev, Ukraine, adopting my two young men who are 22 today. And so imagine what this war makes us think about. For me and them both, they realized they would be in a much different place, probably in fatigues. And my one son said, "What's a fatigue?" And I said, "Hopefully, you're never going to need to know that." They would be in fatigues and rifles in their hand and fighting for their freedom on the front line. And so, anyway, just kind of an interesting note, it's our adoption day tomorrow. It's always a very important day for us, for all of us, the whole extended family. It's another very important day, and I'm going to get to that in one second. I'll be brief. I was just going to report on two good things. I won't go into all the details. I'm not sure you all know that we do participate in the Human Trafficking Task Force, that's the Tampa Bay area regional one, and from time to time, there's operations, and it spans the whole three-county area. We just recently had an operation that touched our area. We have a detective who's assigned to that, was very successful. And so I just bring that up to remind you that we don't just kind of stay in our own little place here. We make sure that we engage in task force and those types of initiatives as well. There was a press release just yesterday, and I got an email from the DEA SAC over in Tampa that our detective who works out of DEA in Tampa had a case, and the gentleman was sentenced yesterday to 27 years in federal prison following his arrest, and it was Detective Skolnul, who was the case agent. I have the list of drugs and guns and what have you, but it was a methamphetamine case and several kilos, and so good person to take off the street for what I'm assuming, since I'm so old, to be my lifetime. So, and then the final thing I just wanted to note, although we will be having a retirement function, is that Officer McGowan is going to be retiring at the end of this month, so this will be his last council meeting after 23 years. You know, if you're seeing maybe a... If, you know, this has been a hard few months, actually for him, it's been a very difficult year for that squad. As you know, Jason Nuttall is home recovering from a massive heart attack. His sergeant just retired last week. Sometimes it takes incidents like that to remind you what's most important in life. And Officer McGowan, as you know, who is also my very dear friend, lost both of his parents to COVID last year. He had come and turned in his resignation to me last year, and I told him I wasn't accepting it, that it wasn't the right time and it wasn't for the right reasons. I felt like he needed to let us, as his family, help resolve some of his grief, and during trying times like that, he really didn't need to push away from us, he needed to let us embrace him. And I think he'll agree that that was an important thing for him. I also told him that if he left, then I was going to take his dog away. And so that's what really kept him. He's going to keep his dog, but he's going to continue to do reserve work. He's got the bomb dog out at the stadium, and he was going to stay throughout the spring training, but we see how that's not working out. But, you know, he's done a great job for us and the city. He'll be missed, and I'm not even sure who the new face is going to be back there, but I just want to make sure you all know that, knew that, and it's going to be a great loss for BPD. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, when's the Citizens Advisory Board meeting next?
We just had it last Wednesday, so it'll... You did.
Did you have the citizens that was in here complaining, did they show up?
No, sir.
Well, they had an opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add, one of the officers who's retired last week, he has two lovely young ladies that are his daughters, and he said that, they said to him, "Dad, we've never had a New Year's Eve with you. You've always been working." So to those individuals that keep us safe, both police and fire, we recognize the sacrifice.
We definitely do. Sergeant Sheehan and also Sergeant Siniglia went out, so that was a great little event that we had and obviously heard some things that were interesting. Can't wait for KB's. All right, any other department heads? Any other department heads that have anything further before we get to Mr. Perry? Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Mayor, Council, I'm going to try to speed dial this thing because I know we're running late. But I have everybody together, and there's some issues and activities I think that it's good to have everybody just here to advise on. The parking garage retail space, I'm meeting with Mr. Baca tomorrow. He had told me that he had over 50 applications. He qualified probably somewhere in the order of 20 to 25 is what he thought would check the boxes of what we were looking for. And so, and he said the hardest part will probably be selecting amongst the competition, which is a good problem to have. So I should be able to bring you something fairly quickly thereafter. I requested the meeting early. be able to bring you something fairly quickly thereafter. I'd requested the meeting earlier, but because of the schedules, it's been a little tight. Another point on our lobbyist and our grant efforts, I was notified yesterday by Southern Group, Ms. Bamer, late in the day, with a text that we received our second award from the state of Florida, which is a $500,000 sewer lining grant. And so Mr. McClellan and his team, working with them, good for us, good for everybody in the city. That sewer lining's important to I and I infiltration inflow, which actually is one of the major contributors to our lawsuit problem. And it's on the to-do list of things we're gonna have to do anyway. So $500,000 from the state's pretty helpful in that regard. Lastly, I, I, I'm remiss that I should have brought this up earlier, but I kind of assumed that because Mr. Tom Kelly, Thomas Kelly, was, had been with the city, that, that he had somehow been kind of ratified. And I promoted Mr. Kelly from finance manager to finance director. And we're doing some realignments in, in finance, but I don't think anybody doubts that, that Tom, his substantive accounting skills as a CPA, his ability to do the deep, heavy lifting of accounting, that's very technical work for preparation of financial statements, and the, the external audit, the CAFR that's being done for the city and the like. That's, that's what separates the men from the boys, whether you can do that as accountant. I can't for sure, you know. I'm not a CPA. He is. I don't understand government accounting. He does, and a whole host of things. So I would ask for, and I think it's necessary, it might not be, but I asked for an endorsement of that and approval to put Tom into that position. I had looked around the country. I bought some, several people in that I think you had met at one time or another. And they were good folks. And there was some interest. And then there was some, you know, issues about whether it would be a fit right for them, a fit right for us and the like. And sometimes when, when you go through the exercise, it's good to go through the exercise, but you realize you got the best gem right in your backyard.
Is this a department head?
It, it would be. It would be the Department of Finance. And so I believe it would be.
That's in our new?
Yes.
Flow chart?
Yes, it's in our new flow chart. And, and it's not adding additional money because we're taking the person that was there and moving some, some other components. And so we'll actually probably save money because in my proposed budget, my approved budget, there was a position for finance director, and, and we won't need to fill that. Yep. So with that, I'd ask for a support from Mr. Kelly. Do you have any questions?
Chair, want to entertain a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, thank you. I thought, I think that's long overdue. I know you looked for the best person because, but your, your best person was sitting right in that office. I, I enjoy working with Tom. He's smart. He knows what's going on. He's, he has high integrity, which is very important to me. And there's no, and he gets information time to you. And so I look forward to working with him. And congratulations to him because well-deserved, and I support that.
Yeah, great, great choice. Thanks, Tom. I, I asked him before you even came on board whether he'd be interested in moving up because we were restructuring from the whole thing. And he's always seemed like a good pick. Tom, are you still planning retiring in about two years?
More or less, yes.
Okay, so, 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 so we, we still need to be looking.
Right, yeah, yeah. I'm aware of that.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yep.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
And one.
Yes.
Here is unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just lastly, City Hall parking, you might be wondering what's going on with that. We're trying to, Mr. McClellan and I, as well as some counselors and the mayor, have talked about City Hall parking. And it, it's difficult to, for folks to realize how to get into our garage. And we're thinking about trying to improve the signage for both who's permitted to park in the lot, the surface lot, and then how to get in the parking garage. And when you look at it, it says entrance, but then when you pull in, it says Marriott Hotel, Spring Hill Suites anyway. And we, we've gotta really rethink just, it's not your problem as much as it is, I think, ours on that front. But we're gonna be really looking at that.
I, I agree. Thank you for that. Something I've noticed always coming in is that we, we made that, we, we spent extra money to make the parking garage attractive, especially the corner on Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
We still got that banner up there that says parking with the arrow. It looks so cheap and cheesy. Can we?
Yeah.
Probably spend an extra million dollars to make it look nice.
It's a beautiful building. It absolutely is a beautiful building. You know, if you take a, just step back from it, look at it, take a couple of breaths, you go, that's some pretty nice.
People don't realize it's a parking garage.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, exactly. So I appreciate what you all did with that. And I'll try to, you know, be a good shepherd of it.
I'll have some questions on that, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So... Is that the back parking lot, is that mostly to be used by people coming in here for planning applications and pay their water bill?
During business hours, Monday through Friday, generally, it's supposed to be, you know, police vehicles on their side, official vehicles on, on, on our side. We have a lot of, a lot of building inspectors and code enforcement and other folks. So it's not public parking, right? And so that was my understanding.
Well, the conversation I had with you, as you well know, yesterday, that I see people parking in there and they're going uptown to eat or going across the hotel and so forth. So how do, how do you monitor who gets the closest spot?
And I, I, before I answer that question...
Because that's because...
It's a legit...
Because we got directors here that probably come and go all day long doing stuff, and they need quick access to their vehicle to, to go do business that's in best interest of us. And we've got extra spaces there. Shouldn't we be taking a look at that to assign that? I mean, like, where's the clerk?
No, I don't disagree. And, 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 you know, I saw an individual get out, look around, then start work, walking towards, you know, downtown up 12th Street and put his chef's mok on. I don't think he was supposed to be parking there to go to work, basically. I, I agree. I sent out a memo, and basically it was put things on pause so that we can figure out the signage, figure out the access, figure out the authorization, because we do have to take a look at it. And...
One suggestion, we have a parking sticker. I've never put one on my cars because I've got too damn many cars. But, because I asked, I have four stickers, they said, no. So there's this parking sticker, so you can identify it by that and then say, hey, you know, you don't have a parking sticker, here, here's you a ten-dollar fine, whatever. That way you can prevent it. But I think you need to make some consideration for department heads or whoever, and in the public access. And then to monitor some along the street here during the business hours, it says for, you know, there's only like four spots now. It used to be more because we went in sideways. Now we got elongated parking. And that should have a signage here that says for utility billing between the hours of seven and four, whatever that is, so that somebody's not jumping out and going and checking into the hotel. That, that, you know, those are the, grandma likes that best, and we need to have that signage there. If it's not there, I don't think it is. So that's the closest for people. Because they, they come in and pay the bill, and they're gone in like five minutes or less. And some, most people with the planning come in and do the same thing. So they need to have close parking versus the convenience for the hotel or somebody going out and having a drink up downtown. But this is something you can do for the employees, I think, is to have employee of the month parking sticker. Or, you know, the, the department heads have their, their, if, and that's something that you have to monitor. I'm not trying to tell you I do. I know you think.
No, you have good ideas.
I think you, I think you think it. But because it's the first time we've ever had that. We've never had anybody, and they just think, okay, it's closest, well, why not? I would do the same thing. So obviously, you know, take a consideration of, of department heads that, that, that needs maybe a little more priority because of the way the business they conduct. And maybe some special circumstances given to employees of the month or, you know, veterans. You know, hey, this is a veteran's parking space. I know we got a couple of handicaps over there. I haven't seen anybody in them, but, you know, maybe that's a requirement. You have to have so many handicaps per space. I'd like to take a review of that before it's final and then give, and put parking stickers on there that if you don't have one, you shouldn't be in here.
I'll take all that into consideration. We're gonna look at it for, you know, and try to get assessment. I'll take it back to you. Just lastly, so external audit is getting completed. Tom, it's running that. And then just, I, I wanna thank, you know, council as well as all the people I work with throughout the city. Vice, Vice Mayor Koachman said that when you get elected, you have to solve problems. And that's kind of where we're at. Everybody in the city's in the problem-solving business right now. That's what it seems like to me. If you're a solid waste collector, you're in the problem, problem-solving business. If you're the city administrator, you're in the problem-solving business. And we got a lot going on. You should be really proud of how much we have going on, what you've laid for a foundation, the macroeconomy's doing good, crazinesses in the world. And, you know, we've got employees that we're, that we're trying to satisfy in an inflationary economy and everything else in between. I'm glad to be part of it. I really am. Makes for an exciting day, and I work with good people. We don't get everything done, but we give a hundred percent every day. And I know you'd all do too, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Perry, that reminds me. Back in about nineteen seventy-nine, eighty, when I would tell people that I was an arborist, and instead of spending them fifteen, twenty minutes trying to explain what that is, I, I would say that people call me up with a problem, and I fix it.
That will be adjourned. Thank you.
I think Jeannie would like to get a picture of everybody with masks to post for St. Patty's